Good evening, this is Public Meeting, the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for November 23rd, 2015. A couple of reminders, if you have an electronic device, will you please turn it off or turn it down so we don't disrupt the proceedings? And second of all, if you plan on speaking on behalf of a petition, either in favor or in opposition, before addressing the board, please sign in at the podium with your name and address. First matter before us is under New Business, ZB 2015-42, the petition's a special permit. The applicant is Ken Cole Investment Trust, property's located at 277 Pawtucket Street. And the petition's, the applicant is seeking a parking reduction allowance for a proposed Jimmy John's restaurant. The petitioner is seeking relief under Section 6.1.5 of the Lowell zoning ordinance, representative of the petitioner.
Yes, sir.
For the record, my name is Attorney Stephen Gearan, I represent Emperor Properties LLC and its owner, Ken Kaiser, which is also Ken Cole Investments. And just a little bit by way of background, you may be familiar with this property, it's currently under construction, it's in mid-phase right now, it's in mixed use, it's going to be office building and commercial, along with residential for students in the U-Lol area. And this was that building, that dilapidated building that was razed quite a while ago. And this project went through the planning board in 2014 and was approved for those units. Mr. Kaiser seeks the special permit tonight with a reduction in the parking as it relates to a proposal to put a Jimmy John's restaurant in there, which is a pizza sub-place. And the reason why he chose that particular vendor is because that area needs it. It's a highly pedestrian area, they're targeting only the pedestrian crowd, they're not looking to increase any traffic, and the restaurant doesn't anticipate that they will have anything but foot traffic. It's going to be doing some deliveries, but the delivery trucks, cars will be gone. And as you can see from, I think, the narrative that we sent in earlier, the deliveries at that location will be coordinated along with the other businesses that are there to reduce the amount of any deliveries or pickups of trash. And this is an ongoing business that Mr. Kaiser has had for over 30 years, he was originally in Lowell for many, many years, and then he relocated to Tingsborough when there was another use for that property. And now he's invested a substantial amount of money into this property, completely, it's new construction, with the idea of having it blend in along with his tenants that he's going to rent to there, and his own business that's going to be located within that building, and he plans on staying there, you know, till the very end, his hope is this is his last move. The building definitely is suitable for a Jimmy John's, the area lends itself to a restaurant because there's so many students in that area, hundreds and hundreds of students that don't have vehicles, that want and need a place that they can walk to, to get food. It's very common in any university settings, and some of you folks may remember being in college or visiting colleges where they have a lot of these sub-shops around, and that's exactly what is envisioned for this area. Mr. Kaiser is entirely invested in this property because he's there himself, and the last thing he wants is to create any chaos or traffic or parking issues there whatsoever. I do want to address one thing, we did get, I believe, I haven't met him yet, but I believe the traffic engineer's right here, and we did get about an hour ago, his comments, and I just would, first, because I think it's important to address those initially. His concern, Mr. Chairman and members, from reading the letter, is that Pawtucket Street is a very congested area, and it's going to create a lot of traffic issues. Pawtucket Street is a very congested area, but the plan for this particular restaurant here is not to create any more car traffic at all, it's to create foot traffic, and they're hoping to do that. They will be able to take deliveries through the back, where there's a way that takes them down there, and they'll be able to do that, and deal with the dumpster and everything like that on a regularly scheduled basis. It's going to be highly coordinated. The last thing Mr. Kaiser or the owner of Jimmy John's who is here tonight wants is to create any kind of extra traffic or any kind of confusion in that area at all. There's, that's a particular corridor that has, for I think generations, been one of these areas in the city where everybody, all the businesses there try to get along for the sake of doing business, and mainly they're nursing homes, it appears, and you'll see at various times that nursing homes park on both sides, not, I'm sorry, funeral homes, and funeral homes park on both sides of the street, and they use each other's parking, and they get along to be able to get business done. This proposal tonight, this request for special permit, is to allow him to use his own parking for his needs, to meet the needs of that building and all the businesses in it, including the residential, and he has that. If you look at the plan, you will see that these, the three additional parking spots in the garage, through the depth of the garage, is more than enough parking he thinks that he needs. In addition to that, you will see that, in the spirit of cooperation with the neighbor next door, Lauren Funeral Home, he has a lease for the five spots. There's also public parking across the street for the university, and the point is, there's sufficient parking in that area to meet the needs of this business. Mr. Kaiser thought this out thoroughly as to what impact not only would have on the area, but also what impact it would have on his own business that's going to be there, and on his tenants that are going to be renting there. And through his 30 years of experience as a landlord for students in this area, and also a graduate of the university, he knows that there's plenty of parking here, and this is primarily going to be targeted toward students and people in that area who don't have cars, or who don't drive their car there to get a pizza. So although the traffic engineer brought up some good points, if it were a type of restaurant where cars were going to be pulling up there and deliveries were going to be there, that would be significant, but that's not what's intended here at all. It's not what's sought, it's not the target of the clientele or the customer base, and we think that, as proposed, that he meets the requirements of the special permit for the reduced parking for the restaurant. Now, there's, I believe, he would need one per every, it's 1400 square feet, so you round it up, so I think it's three spots that he would need with the special permit, and he has that, he'd only have to use one of those that he has. And then there's also additional parking on his site that would service the students that are there. Even though he's required to have a certain amount of parking spots per residential unit, those students do not have cars for the most part, so there'd be a lot of available parking there anyway, but even though there's available parking, he knows he won't even need that parking. So we don't see it as anything that would create further congestion in that area at all, we see it as something that, you know, goes hand in hand with what's going on in the university that we all know is probably the biggest thing we have going right now in the city of Lowell, and this kind of blends into that nicely. And Mr. Kaiser is here to answer any particular questions, as is Mr. Quinn, who is the owner of Jimmy John's. So we're open to any questions and provide any additional information we have. And again, when the letter from the traffic engineer, we, you know, my response to that is kind of, you know, after just reading it, we didn't have a whole lot of time to look at it, but the gist of it, at least as I read it, is that it's going to create problems with deliveries, and it's going to create problems with parking, and none of those things are anticipated at all. In fact, Mr. Kaiser would agree that there's already going to be a no parking sign there, he'd agree that the signs say no parking, no stopping, and no deliveries as well. He doesn't want that at all. He doesn't want it, and, you know, nobody wants it, so at least we're all on the same page as far as that goes. But I think it may have been, you know, not an opportunity to explain what really Jimmy John's was intending to target as a client base. So we think it does meet the requirements, we respectfully ask this board to approve the special permit.
So I think what I'll do, Mr. Gary, since we only received the comments from the traffic engineer this evening also, I think I'm going to turn the floor over to the traffic engineer, let him explain what he wrote up, then maybe we can hear it from him directly, and make sure we both understand his concerns or no concerns, but I think we'll do that, and then we'll proceed.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good, good evening. My name is Nicholas Bosnado, I'm the city's transportation engineer. We met with Mr. Kaiser, I think, about a month ago, at which time I think I brought up some of these issues. I do apologize that the letter didn't go out until, I thought my comments had, but anyway. Yeah, some of the concerns I have is I read, there was a response from the developer, and they had spoken about the delivery trucks, the Cisco and the produce delivery, parking in the closest available commercial loading zone. I guess my impression is that there is nothing really close to there. There's no parking on Pawtucket, there's no parking on Fletcher, there's no parking on Salem, so I'm not quite sure how those deliveries would take place, and what I'm afraid of is that, as most delivery trucks do, they just pull over on the side of the road sometimes, and if that was to happen in Pawtucket, it would be detrimental to both the safety and the traffic flow in that area. Second of all, like I said, there's not on-street parking in that area of Mount, I think, what is it, Mount Hope and Mount Vernon Streets are residential areas, and we wouldn't want people using that parking for, to access. I think, you know, and then the traffic coming in and out of that driveway originally, it was supposed to be residential and office space, which is not as much as a turnover. That driveway's very close to the signalized intersection with Fletcher, so it would be, I think, detrimental to the operation of that signalized intersection. Finally, I think the TMU zone calls for 15 parking spaces for a restaurant, and they're asking for three spaces. The Jimmy John's downtown, they use two delivery vehicles, and I know they've had issues where they get parking tickets all the time because they park right there with their cars in front of their store, so that's two delivery vehicles, they're asking to have three parking for the whole restaurant, which means literally no parking. I'm sure, you know, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic there, but, you know, you can't exclude people from driving to the restaurant. So again, my concerns are traffic congestion and traffic safety and parking.
Good, thank you. Mr. Gary, you have any comments in relationship to?
Yes, if I could just try to shed a little bit of light on what Mr. Kaiser's intention on, then I'll let Mr. Kaiser address some of those issues himself, but in the, for the deliveries, the delivery trucks can go right down to the back of his lot, there's plenty of room to turn around, that's where the dumpster pickup's going to be, that's what the plan is, to be able to drive down there, do the deliveries off the street, turn around and leave, and those deliveries will be very carefully scheduled and very carefully monitored. The traffic engineer's right, you can't control who parks in front of your lot, in front of your premises, but the city can, and there's going to be no parking, so they shouldn't park there, and they probably won't park there unless they want to get towed or ticketed. Mr. Kaiser is going to discourage anything, and like I said, he would agree to, there's already going to be a no parking sign, but he would agree to no parking, no stopping, and no deliveries, so, you know, if there's a new driver, he would know. But, you know, they'd have to work with the drivers of the deliveries to make sure that they're aware of that. You know, these restaurants where they, and it comes before, I imagine the ZBA often, where, you know, restaurants look for the reduction in parking because some restaurants, restaurants are a general term, and, you know, if you think of a restaurant, you know, like Abe &amp; Louise or something like that, or the bigger restaurant that has a huge parking lot, well, people are staying there, and people are eating there, and people are dining there. This is not one of those restaurants. This restaurant is going to be for takeout and pickup and delivery, and that's it. There's going to be some eat-in, people will eat in there who live around there, but there's not going to be cars, and there's not going to be any kind of, I guess, any kind of additional need or burden on the parking in that area. I don't think it's going to generate traffic in that area any more than that whole area already is through the university, but again, this is a university setting, and that's exactly why Jimmy John's would like to go there, and that's exactly why Mr. Kaiser had solicited that type of business, because it goes along with everything. He has his own cars that are in that garage, and the last thing Mr. Kaiser would want is to be jammed up with his own parking. So he knows this business, he's been in it for three decades, and he's catered to the university and the students, and through that experience, he can talk to you directly, but he can tell you that what is planned on his parking, what he anticipates will be used, and what parking he has to alleviate any concerns with traffic or any kind of congestion like that. The reference to, I think, the driveway to the left, I don't think that's a driveway, I think it's, it wasn't anything, at least it's nothing Mr. Kaiser put there, that was there. I mean, that was an existing way, and I think he's just going to improve that way. But there's plenty of room for the trucks to get on there, make the deliveries, and turn around and leave. And I'll let Mr. Kaiser address it directly if any other specific question.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Ken Kaiser. Yeah, the deliveries that are made to the business Jimmy John's can be made on-site, they don't have to be in a loading zone. I think Tim Quinn, in his response, was getting at what he does downtown, which is loading zone there, they don't have any off-site parking there, so he can pull down, we've had, through construction, I've seen some of the biggest trucks I've ever seen drive down, especially when they were delivering the 400-pound blocks for my wall I had to build back there, come down, and the parking lot is broken into two areas, and it isn't, it is a street, it's not a driveway, it's Falls Street, and it's a right-of-way for both myself and my neighbor, the Ottawa Nuns, and the Locks and Canals, which is or is not still in existence back there, but that's what it was designed for originally. I'm going to improve that right away with paving, curbing, and, you know, what was approved by the board last year. So the driveway, the first part of it, you can pull in where the dumpster truck would pull in, for instance, and he would lift up the dumpster and put it back down, and then back out into the roadway of Falls Street, and then go back out. So they don't have to back out onto Pawtucket Street, they can pull in and then go out. We will have signs at the top of Falls Street that, you know, there'd be a stop sign there, there'll also be a right turn only, so that we don't turn out onto the intersection of Fletcher, so that has already been by the previous traffic engineer. We agreed that between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m., and I think it was 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., something like that, Monday through Friday, that would be right turn only out of there. As far as whether this is going to be a gourmet sandwich shop, Jimmy John's is a national chain, and it's new to New England, but it's going to be here, it's here to stay now. There's, I don't know how many stores nationwide, 300?
About 2,000.
2,000, sorry. And I think there's 300 planned for the Boston area coming up soon, so they're very, very common on college campuses throughout the country, mostly in the Midwest, and I, college kids and myself go to school in the New Jersey area, and I remember visiting Jimmy John's, I'm very impressed with the way they're run, and Mr. Quinn runs a good business downtown, I was there today for lunch, and it's a great sandwich, and it's a great atmosphere, and I think he's going to do very well on Pawtucket Street. I'm zoned for, and approved for, other businesses there also, I can put another business there. It could be a Verizon store, they get deliveries to, they're going to have their phones delivered once a week, they're going to have stationery delivered from Staples, the same thing would come up, but those aren't required to have additional parking, and so, you know, that wouldn't be before this board. So it is business zoned on the first floor for both my office, my property management company, as well as whoever I rent to, and they're all going to have deliveries, and we're going to make it work, and we're going to stay off of Pawtucket Street. And we've gotten along very, very well with our neighbors. I've personally visited all of them, all my direct butters, and I don't know if any of them are here tonight, but they were in favor of the original approval, and I've spoken to them about this, this recent hearing that was going to take place tonight. This is a pedestrian-designed restaurant and a pedestrian-designed area, and that's why it's better fit for me to rent to something like a Jimmy John's or that type of business, because it benefits both myself as the landlord there and for the community, not just students. There's a couple hundred apartments up and down Mount Washington, Mount Vernon, Salem Street, that have families in there that would love to take a walk over on Saturday afternoon and have their lunch there. And University Crossing has 300 full-time employees, not just during the school, but during the summer, and they're not going to always just go downstairs and eat in Crossroads Cafe, they'll want to come across and have something different. So I think it's a good fit, and if you'd like to hear from Tim Quinn, he's here also to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, can I just, before we open it up, are you planning on any signage on the building for this restaurant?
Yes, I think he'll have the regular signs that's designed for Jimmy John's.
Is it going to be affixed to the structure?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The reason why I ask is, you've been saying it's going to be a pedestrian type of business that you're looking for. If you didn't have the sign, I was going to say, what type of advertising you're doing, how is it word of mouth?
Well, they'll have a sign, and I think it's Jimmy John's as the franchise will, you know, control what that is, but Mr. Quinn, Mr. Chairman, may be able to answer those exact questions.
No, I'm just curious.
But they will have a sign, Jimmy John's, whatever, you know, probably somewhat similar to downtown Lowell.
Yeah, I would envision some kind of raised lettering white letters across the pendant.
Yep. Now, the three extra spots you mentioned, those are going down on the ground level, correct?
Yes.
Are those only for Mr. Kaiser's business?
Are those only for his business?
Yeah.
That's what they're for, I mean, he's proposing three additional spots.
No, what I'm saying is, is that only for the property management company, or is that open to anybody?
I think that's, yeah. Yeah, just for his company, it gives it...
So there's four just for his company?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the five that, I know we received a letter from the butter, yep. The five, what's the use of the five? Who's going to use those five?
Well, if there's, he doesn't anticipate there'll be a need for those five, but it would be for whoever would need those spots if they're, and again, it's somewhat confusing because he doesn't anticipate having to use those spots, but if there's an overflow parking, that's who could use it. If anybody were going to want to go to Jimmy John's and drive there, they could park there and walk right over, I mean...
But there must be something to tell them to go over there. The reason why I ask is, I didn't know if those five were for customers, or if they were for employees.
I think what Mr. Kaiser's saying, they'd be used for the employees of Jimmy John's, so in other words, it takes a car off the site.
Right, right, and I know it was somewhat answered, and then I think there was talked about bicycles being used and that type, or some of your employees might not even have a vehicle.
Right.
For whatever reason. I was just wondering how those five are going to be used.
Right, and just so you know, on Mr. Kaiser's, you know, he has trucks here for his management company, and they're gone by 8:15 in the morning, and they don't come back until the end of the day, and most of the people who do take the cars, there's employees that drive, some take those cars home at night, and that's their car, and others get dropped off, and they don't have a car there. So, you know, this, as I said, this is thought out by Mr. Kaiser, he anticipated all of his parking needs, all of the needs for his tenants, as well as all of the needs for the proposed Jimmy John's.
And how many seats are there in the restaurant?
Excuse me?
How many seats are going to be actually in the restaurant?
I believe it's, could seat 30.
30, 30, I think a maximum of 30? And I think what it is, is probably just those tables.
Yeah, there's a lot of, we call them bench seats or community seats, we, you know, it's a counter, counter.
Okay.
A lot of times you see them going around the perimeter of the inside of the store with stools and...
Yep. Okay, anything else you want to add to this point?
No, nothing, other than, you know, we think it's a good, it's a good fit with that community based upon the research that Mr. Kaiser's done and his experience, and we ask that you consider approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going to open it up to the public, is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Going to open it up to the board, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I can, I have a couple of questions, although you've pretty much answered them, Mr. Gary, but I wanted to follow up on the chairman's question about the off-site spaces at the funeral home. Is there a way that those, or does Mr. Kaiser think there's a way that those could be assigned to the tenants, the apartment tenants?
Well, I can have him address that, but they, there is a way to do that, the, he doesn't anticipate that the students are even going to use the parking that's required for having the residential units there. But are you saying even with that, to tell any students to go there, to use that, so the business can use the other spots?
Well, I'm just, I guess, in line with what Mr. Bailey was asking, just the idea that if I, let's say I drove to Jimmy John's and pulled in behind the property and there was no place to park, I'm not sure I would be able to figure out that I have a space in the funeral home lot to park instead.
Okay, so you're talking about how would they know?
Right.
And I'll let Mr. Kaiser...
If it is overflow, right.
That's a good question, I'll let him address that.
I guess we could, we could put some signage down by the, in the parking lot, that overflow parking is available next door at Lauren's Funeral Home, we could do that.
I'm in favor of issuing the permit, I'm just trying to figure out how logistically this will work with, again, I agree with the idea that it'll be mostly pedestrian traffic, people that are tired of eating at Crossroads Cafe and want to try something different. I do want to go on record, I'm disappointed that Mr. Quinn didn't bring sandwiches for all of us for the evening, because I have a feeling we're going to be here a while tonight, and we might need some nourishment later on, but...
I'll take care of that in a few minutes.
Okay. I know the shop, I work downtown, and I know that the shop has been successful having essentially no parking, or just, you know, parking by chance, if a meter opens up, there's a lot of foot traffic downtown, so I anticipate, you know, the same idea with this particular location, so.
One thing to add to the parking to keep in mind is, by the code, I was required to have 14 parking spaces for these six apartments, which is, you know, .75 per bedroom, and they're three-bedroom units, so it's 18 bedrooms, so I'm required to have 14 spaces. I've been renting to U-Lol students for 30 years in and around both sides of the bridge, and particularly more, even more in Pawtucketville, where on University Ave, we have no parking. And I tend to find that, through my experience, that there's maybe one car per apartment, even on a three-bedroom, four-bedroom, two-bedroom, because those students that choose to live, and they pay a higher price to live that close, and they choose to live within walking distance, they're foregoing their vehicle, so they're not paying insurance, they're not paying a car payment, they're not paying for gas, so they pay a little more for rent, and they welcome being able to walk, you know, get out of bed and walk five minutes and be in class. And so I anticipate probably one car per apartment, I have six apartments, there's probably be six cars, the code required me to have 14, so I think there'll be some parking back there for someone that wants to leave downtown and come to this Jimmy John's and have a sandwich and park out back.
Thanks, two more comments, and then I actually have a question for the planning office, I guess I'll start with that. We haven't talked about the slight change in plans for the front of the building, but we did receive material in our package about the change from the street trees to the whiskey barrels with plantings inside of them, and I'm not opposed to those, I just don't know if that's something that we would even be voting on as part of tonight's petition.
Tonight's petition is about the parking. We're having meetings, the department is with the applicant with regard to the sidewalk and the plantings, yep.
And so just two other things, sorry. One, I don't normally do this, but I would actually like to compliment you on the building that you put up, I think it... I think it looks like it has been there all along with the, with the, even though the building where the, the nuns are located has been there for probably over 100 years, and the funeral homes, the, the project looks, it, it really fits well with, basically you did exactly what you said you were going to do when you came to see us, I don't know, several months or a year ago, so, and again, I don't normally do this, but I did want to compliment you on, on the, on the project. And then the final thing, which I've been now listening to myself talk, and I don't remember the final question, so maybe I'll ask for more time later, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think this restaurant, or this particular business, would actually complement that neighborhood and the city well in that particular area. You know, I do have some, some concerns with traffic too, like the traffic agenda stated, but overall, I think, I think this is a well-thought-out plan. You know, I know, I know you said you can be carrying more to the college community. Can you just, maybe it's in the packet, I missed it, is, is, can you say the hours of operation for the business?
Yeah, I can let Mr. Quinn address that directly. You have to go from the podium.
Hours of operation, we haven't determined yet. Downtown, we run from 11. Tim Quinn, owner of Jimmy John's. Downtown, we are open from 11:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. We would like to stay open a little later here, if there was a market for it. We're thinking it may be, you know, maybe a little later on weekends, Friday, Saturday. Haven't, we haven't determined that yet, though.
Okay. That's the only question I really had, but, but overall, you know, like, like I said, I think it'll complement the section of the city well, this particular business. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of questions too, but I, I like the idea of this restaurant in this location. The parking certainly is a challenge, for sure, as well as, I think, deliveries, but first, the, the plan that was submitted has 32 seats on it. I think you mentioned 30, it's about 32, though. Is that, is this plan correct?
Yeah, maybe it is 32, I may, I may have misspoke, 32 seats. It's whatever the plan says, and that, that's a proposed plan, it might do less than that, you know.
Okay. And then there's a space in the rear that looks like a break area with double doors that exit directly out to the back of the building. Does that work from a grading standpoint? What is that, I guess?
I think it's a deck. Do you want to...
Think it's a deck, okay.
I'll let Mr. Kaiser.
That's a, that's an extru, extending deck, six-by-six deck off of the back, and so the break area is, is the immediate area in front of the, in front of the double doors that go out to the deck. He might be able to utilize that as, as a table out there with chairs for, for customers to, to sit out there and overlook the canal, it'd actually be a nice look, and I have another one on my side for my real estate office also. So there's two six-by-six decks out the back that over, overhang the parking area, because the garage is under that.
So they wouldn't be supported off of columns that would be going down to grade, or...
No, there's no columns, they're, they're self...
They'd be supported off of some other structure?
They're cantilevered into the building, yes.
Okay. All right, and so the idea is to potentially have some parking in the back, potentially for a few people that might end up going to this restaurant by car, but primarily it's going to be people that are not going by car. How do they get to the restaurant? They're going to walk up Falls Street? Is that the access that they're going to follow?
No, they can, if they, if they do park in the back and they want to go to the restaurant, there's two ways to get there. They could walk up Falls Street, they can, they could go into the, into the lobby, and there's a lobby on the, downstairs, separate from the contractor's garage. It's a self-sufficient lobby, and it should be on the plans on the bottom floor, and that lobby goes into either a stairway that you can come up, or you can take the elevator up. The elevator would take you out to the lobby on the first floor, which would take you out to the sidewalk, and you'd be up at the grade level of the first floor.
Okay, I'm almost there.
Deliveries would, to his restaurant, would also be able to utilize the elevator if they needed to, and come up that way.
Terrific, okay, so I see the lobby now. So the lobby is off the handicap parking space.
Right.
That could also be used for a patron that might be handicapped accessing the restaurant.
Yes.
And they would be able to go into the lobby and up the elevator. Wonderful, okay. I got it. Thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
All right. I think my last question is for the delivery trucks. So the delivery trucks are, I've seen Cisco trucks that are tractor-trailers with the short trailer on it, and I don't know if that's what you get, but I don't see a tractor-trailer vehicle negotiating Falls Street into the parking lot, blocking parking spaces while they deliver material, then backing out onto Falls Street around that turn, and then exiting onto Pawtucket Street. Seems rather optimistic. So I'm worried about what kind of vehicle we're having deliveries from. Is it strictly a 40-foot box truck? Maybe that would work, but I can't see anything beyond that.
I think Cisco, Cisco has different-sized trucks. I know the one that we get downtown is usually a big 30-footer, I don't know if it's a 40-footer. The produce trucks are small, I don't see them having any issues, but I mean, if Cisco were to have an issue with a big truck, I believe they could simply arrange the logistics where they use a different truck to get back down there.
Well, the requirement, I think, is that we use Falls Street in that back parking lot for deliveries, right?
Right.
And I think that that, so the only way that would be successful is if that vehicle was able to be back into Falls Street and drive out of Falls Street, rather than back out of Falls Street into Pawtucket Boulevard, Pawtucket, is it Pawtucket Street? Yeah. So, I just want to assure us that we're not having vehicles backing out of Falls Street that deliver vehicles.
No, that, that is not the plan, and I believe if you pull down there, there is room to, to turn a truck.
I agree, there's room, but it's only for 40-foot-long trucks maximum, I believe. Maybe Nicholas, you could weigh in on this, but are we going to limit the size of delivery trucks, maybe, if that's the intent, that they're using the loading zone in the rear of the site?
Yes, Mr. McCarthy, I think you are correct in your, in your statement that...
All right.
That you would have to be very optimistic. I think only a small truck could make it in there and back out, and like you said, during the time they're loading and unloading, all those parking spaces would be blocked in, so, so yeah, you can...
It, it, it isn't really designed as a commercial loading zone, is the point, probably more than anything else. We're sort of making a commercial loading zone out of a parking area. I don't know, I kind of wish there was more thought put into how that would happen. That's my only complaint, I guess, with this. Other than that, I, I like the idea of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, if Mr. Kaiser could just address some of your comments.
Sure, thank you.
If there's a, if there's a way to guarantee a smaller truck, I think the Cisco delivery is one day a week, only one time a week, and the produce trucks are twice a week, so the total deliveries to his store are three for the whole week, then I think we could probably make that happen. I'm sure that the vendor wants his business, I'm sure they'll accommodate the type of delivery we need there. Also, Falls Street is going to be over 23 feet wide, so we have some space there coming in and out for, for trucks to turn, coming off of Pawtucket.
But I don't think the intent is that Falls Street is going to accommodate a loading zone, it's just for negotiating...
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand now, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I echo the concerns that Mr. McCarthy had as well, as far as the size of trucks, 18-wheels, and I like trying to make that spin, if you would, and then utilizing the city street as a, a turnabout, but I think Mr. Kaiser has addressed that, and with due diligence, seeking to request Cisco to come in with a box truck, and I think, I think if you have good inventory control, I think that'll help manage the size of truck, that'll be there. The other comment I heard, and I just want clarification, I don't recall who made reference to a stop sign, putting a stop sign in, and could you just touch on that, and where...
I think the plan, the plan already calls for a stop sign.
Yeah, okay.
At the top of Falls Street, so the suggestion was, if, as a condition, if even the traffic agenda, everybody thought it made any sense, but he put an additional sign, or signage on that saying, no parking, no, no deliveries, and no stopping, because he doesn't want that.
Yeah, I just, I thought he was making an additional stop sign, and I didn't see it in the plans, and I just wanted to clarify that, so, I just...
And Mr. Perrin, just in addition to what you were saying about, you know, the small box truck, he would agree to, to see that that happens, and the other thing that would help is the time of delivery. I know a lot of restaurants take deliveries very early in the morning, where, because of their, if they are trying to get out onto a street, they don't, they have other deliveries to make too, so they don't want to be out on that street. I know it's logistics as to wherever they're delivering in that area, but he would also, you know, research that area and see if, that, that issue, and see if they can do, you know, at very off-times to have the delivery, when, when it's less congestion, less traffic, certainly not 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, which is one of the worst times over there.
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with you, Counselor. I know that, you know, Cisco delivers all over the Commonwealth in tight spots throughout cities, and I'm, I'm sure they do a, a transportation analysis on what's more effective for them, and what type of vehicles they bring into selective neighborhoods, and they, they do a cost, they look at a scheduling value as well, so...
Right, they want the business, and they, they have the trucks to accommodate situations like this, so...
Yep, that satisfies the couple of concerns I had, and then one other was answered as well, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I think this is a very good idea, it's conducive for the area as far as with the students being there, but I, I share the same sentiments and concerns about the deliveries, which Mr. Kaiser has done a great job of addressing those, but the parking is still kind of a, a little bit of a concern for me. I, a couple of questions I did have, though, I mean, maybe you can ask the Mr. Quinn and Mr. Kaiser, I guess. How many total employees, Mr. Quinn, how many anticipated employees do you think are going to be working on any given time at this facility?
Well, just for instance, right now, we have three employees downtown, four, which would be an off-peak shift. During lunch rush, we would have probably six to eight employees.
Okay. And I guess, and Mr. Kaiser, I mean, your business is going to go, be going in there as well, and how many employees do you have at your business?
I have two, two full-time employees in my office and three part-time, four part-time. It's a real estate office. My agents are on the go a lot, so they're not there very much, and my, my maintenance staff, which would be the contractor garage, has five to six employees at different times, which they are not there during the day at all, so they, they come in at 8:00, they're gone by 8:15, and they return at 4:30, and they're gone at 4:45, and two out of the five trucks go home with two of the employees, so they, they're not on site, and on weekends, we're not there at all. I think Mr. Quinn also, most likely, being in the neighborhood he's going to be in, I'm betting that 90% of his employees are going to be students.
Well, I...
And they're going to, and they're going to walk to work.
I, I, I somewhat anticipate that as well, but I just, I certainly got to make sure, I mean, you don't know who you're going to hire at the time.
Sure, yep.
I mean, can't speculate as to that, but I mean, but that, that was certainly one of my main concerns. Also, while the overflow parking, I do like an idea of putting a sign there, but then my next question would be, like, how, if there is some overflow parking, how are the people going to get from the funeral home over to your business? I mean, is there any, is there a walkway or something?
Yeah, they, they come right out to the, to the public sidewalk.
Okay.
Lauren's on the same side of the street as me, right next door, so there would be no crossing of any roadway or anything, so...
No, I understand that, I just don't know if there's crossing of any...
They would just come up to the street and turn left, and they'd be there in, you know, 50 yards, less than 50 yards.
And would you be working out signs, signage with Lauren's, as to having them, like, not crossing any landscape or anything, or any...
I think that if they're going to park there for the purpose of going over to Jimmy John's, they're going to know where to go.
I know, I, I, I understand, I just...
Yeah, so, but I will put something down on my lot that, you know, states that there is overflow parking available, and you can have some kind of direction where, how to get there, or whatever, or the address.
But I do, I do like the idea of putting a sign over there for those, for those purposes. I would probably ask that that be a condition of any allowance on that, so, all right. But otherwise, I, I do like the, like I said, it is conducive for that area, a lot of student traffic, and I think it'll be good for the neighborhood, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Just, I guess, just a couple of things before I summarize. How does Mr. Lauren, how's he going to control those five spots next door?
Mr. Lauren currently leases spaces to students in the neighborhood, particularly from across the street, from one of his friends who owns a six-family over there. He doesn't have any parking, so they've been parking over there for years, and they park in a certain location up to the back. These five spaces are near my property line, the fence line, and he's actually gained some parking since I've done this project, because I've cleaned up his area, taken out some trees over there, and, and he's, other than the days, you know, a couple of days a week that he has funerals, and it'd have to be a big funeral to fill his lot, but normal funerals, there's still spaces there, and those tenants from across the street have been parking there for years, so we can dedicate a number of them, and I can work something out with him with some signage on those spaces.
Okay. Do you plan on signing a lease with him?
I plan on signing a lease with him, yes.
Okay, and will it be up to five? Is five going to be the maximum, as far as, you know?
Yes, no more than five.
Okay. The other, the other thing I'll, and good, that, that's good to hear, the other thing I'll mention, you know, as people were asking you questions, I was rereading your letter that you had put together, and one of the things you pointed out was the university-owned municipal parking that's on the same side of the street.
Yes, there is a university parking lot.
I know, I know you can't come in here and say, you know, X amount of spots could be dedicated, but I think that's another source of off-street parking that may be available.
And it is within the, I think, the 400-foot buffer for, for that requirement. It's, it's less than that, it's about 100 feet less. It is metered parking, it isn't just for the university and their employees, it's open to the public. If you want to go to the bookstore over there, or you want to go have a sandwich over there, the public can go in there and park, and it, it's a very inexpensive metered parking, and I've parked there myself when, when I've, when I've wanted to leave, when my, you know, area was full of construction vehicles or whatever, was blocked for, for construction, I would be able to park over there myself, so I've used it quite a few times, I've gone to the bookstore and over there to eat too, so that, that is available, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So, Mr. Gary, so I've written a couple of, well, more than a couple of things here, talk about if this is approved for conditions, if I can run through those with you and see what you think. So I heard for conditions, there'll be no deliveries at all on Pawtucket Street.
Correct.
There'll be signage that will call for the overflow, I guess, directing people to the Lauren site, for instance. Judy, did we receive, or do they need to resubmit new plans showing the additional parking that they are providing now, since their first submission?
The additional five spaces?
In other words, the current plans that we have from the petitioner, is everything reflected, for instance, with the additional parking?
The plans we have are dated 10/20...
The plans we have are dated ten twenty-eight fifteen.
Yeah. Those should, those should reflect those spots.
I just want to make sure everything we've talked about's been reflected as such. The next one will be the, Mr. Kaiser just mentioned, he plans on having a signed lease with Mr. Lauren next door, so if we could have that also. And I, I think the last thing, and I'll mention this, and I'll see if any of the board members agree or not, but I think because we're granting the reduction of the parking, and I believe the petitioner's shown he has some good business acumen as far as handling what he needs to handle, what he's had in the past, I don't think it's out of the ordinary to ask, you know, we do like administrative review just to ensure that there aren't any issues. I know, I heard comments from the board members on certain issues. I don't envision that there's going to be an issue with Pawtucket Street with parking. I think Pawtucket Street is pretty well-regulated right now, and I'm sure the Lowell Police would rectify that quickly, but I think because of the number of spots that we are asking for the reduction, I'd like to have a six-month administrative review, make sure there's no issues.
I think it's a great idea.
And then that way, if there are any issues, we can, you know, I'm sure it can be rectified, addressed, but I think that's fair and reasonable. I know the traffic engineer had some comments, and he had some very good comments also, but I think, based on everything that's been presented and the comments that've come in from the board, I would think that would be acceptable as long as, you know...
Those conditions you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, are all acceptable, including the six-month review. I think it's important to calendar when the six months is going to start. Is the six months going to start from the day he gets his permit to operate Jimmy John's?
That'd be occupancy permit, right?
Occupancy permit, so when he gets a CO, I think that makes sense.
Yep. But that's okay with you.
Okay. That's acceptable.
So I know I haven't got the decision. Anybody else have any other comments or conditions? Okay. Well, so the petitioner's here for a special permit for the restaurant, but also for the parking reduction, as, and as I've just stated, I believe the petitioner has shown, based on the burden of evidence that he had to provide, I believe he has met the requirements for the parking reduction, but I also believe these set of conditions will hopefully make this venture a successful one. And hopefully, we don't have any issues there, but I really don't envision any, but, so I believe you've met the, the burden as far as the special permit, and if I could have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand fifteen dash zero forty-two for a special permit for two seventy-seven Pawtucket Street with the four conditions previously mentioned by the chairman.
Okay.
Second the motion.
So I got, so, wait a minute. Okay, so that's right, we're down to four, because we don't have to do anything with the plans, right? As usual, Dennis is a hundred percent correct, yeah. Okay, could I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Paglia?
Approved with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Perrin?
Approved with condition.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just...
Yes.
...review the conditions. So no deliveries on Pawtucket Street.
Correct.
Signage directing to the overflow parking at the funeral home.
Yeah.
Decision is based on the parking plan, parking plan dated ten twenty-eight fifteen, provided by Hancock Engineering, yes, Hancock Associates, a signed lease for the five parking spaces, and a six-month administrative review of parking, starting with, at the certificate of occupancy for the restaurant.
So as previously stated, I was correct. It was fine, yeah. Okay, Attorney Gary and Mr. Kaiser, you've been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
All right. Thank you. Next matter before us is ZB two thousand fifteen dash thirty-nine. Petition's variance. The applicant is TK Development LLC. The property is located, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, fourteen London Street, and the applicant is proposing to construct a new single-family without meeting a lot area frontage, front yard setback, and lot area per dwelling unit requirement. The petitioner is seeking relief under section five point one of the Lowell zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
James Flood, five forty-nine Rogers Street, representing TK Development. I had sent a letter in requesting a continuance of this matter to December fourteenth. We did appear at the planning board, and the two director butters were there and had some concerns, and we agreed to meet with them to try to address those concerns and hopefully come back with their support for the December fourteenth meeting, so I'm requesting a continuance.
Okay. And as far as, okay, you want to continue it until December fourteenth, Mr. Flood?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so could I have a motion for a continuance to December fourteenth?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand fifteen dash thirty-nine for variance for fourteen London Street to be continued to December fourteenth.
Is that, is that December fourteenth? Is that it? Okay.
That's what I was told, yes.
Okay. All right. Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Continue to December fourteenth.
Member Callahan?
Continue to December fourteenth.
Member McCarthy?
Continued to December fourteenth.
Member Paglia?
Continued to December fourteenth.
Member Peck?
Continue.
Member Perrin?
Continued to December fourteenth.
Okay. Our next matter before us is ZB two thousand fifteen dash forty. The petition's a variance. The applicant is Talidge Adams LLC. Property is located at sixty-six West Fourth Street, and the petition, the applicant is seeking to, to construct a new single-family home on the subject property without meeting lot area requirements as stated in section five point one of the zoning, city zoning ordinance. Mr. Flood?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I have a new plan that I'd like to give to you. Once again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, James Flood, five forty-nine Rogers Street, Lowell, representing Talidge Adams LLC, the present owner of the property. My client acquired the property. They had purchased a tax lien from the City of Lowell and foreclosed through the, through the land court to acquire title. So they, we're here tonight, we're, they would like to, to improve the lot by constructing a single-family residential dwelling. We're requesting a variance because of the size of the lot. The lot is located at the corner of West Fourth Street and Albion Street, and according to the records at the City of Lowell Assessor's Office, it contains two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet. Presently zoned USF, which requires three thousand square feet. This is a little unique, because in, in, in running the chain of title to the property from nineteen thirty-seven to the present date, this parcel of land is always listed as having thirty-five hundred square feet of property, which is more than is required in this zone, but there is a reservation in the deed that we had, they would have to reserve a five-foot strip along both West Fourth Street and Albion Street for sidewalk purposes. So if you measure that five-foot strip by the frontage on both streets, you'll see that we're now down to two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet, which is the thirty-five hundred less the, the sidewalk area. I, I've reviewed the staff comments with my client, and we have addressed them in the new plan submitted tonight. I apologize for the plan that was sent to you, but I didn't receive that till Friday, and I sent it to Judy, and she did say she had some problems with it, so I had a new plan prepared over the weekend, which I think addresses all the issues that were mentioned. We have changed the parking spaces to stack parking on the lot. We have provided for fifteen-foot curb cut, which can be reduced if the, if this board feels it's too close to the street. We have, we have shown the usable open space, and we have put a scale on the, on the property, on the plan. And as you can see from my application, I had submitted plans from both the engineering department and the assessor's office of the surrounding area, and as you can see, most of the lots in that area are a similar or smaller size than what we have before you tonight. So because of the size of the lot and the unique, unique situation involved, I feel that we, my client would suffer hardship if this request was not approved, and because of the other lots in the area, this is not, would not be detrimental to the public good or derogate from the intent of zoning. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I think my narrative laid it out. I think the new plan covers all of the issues that the, that staff had on the property.
Mr. Flood, when, when did the, I guess, the client acquire the property? When was that acquired?
They bought it at the auction. They bought a lot of properties from the, from the city, and I think I gave, did I put a copy in there of the receipt for the taxes? That would have been from the land court.
I don't, did we receive anything? I don't think so.
I have it in here someplace, Mr. Chairman. I know it's...
We do. We have the certificate of tax lien.
Yes. It would have been in July of two thousand fifteen. Through the land court.
In, in July of fifteen?
Yep.
Yeah, because, I mean, on the, on the plans or the plot plan you gave us tonight, I noticed Mr. Quimby's name's still on there. That's why I was asking. So Mr. Quimby doesn't own the property anymore, correct?
No, Mr. Quimby lost it. He lost it for taxes. My client purchased the property at the auction. And foreclosed through the land court.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you want to add to this one?
Nope.
Okay. All right. I'm going to open it up to the public. Is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Favor? Hearing none? That portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone here like to speak in opposition? 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 Hearing none? That portion of public hearing is closed. Going to open it up to the board. Van?
I don't really have any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I think this is going to be a great asset to the neighborhood. The fact that we're building a single-family in this densely populated neighborhood with as much open space as this lot now would have, as well as two off-street parking spaces, I think is, is a surprise, I think, because it just is such a congested area, and this, even though it doesn't meet the minimum lot area, is going to appear to have more open space, and I think that most of the properties down there, and I just think that it's fabulous. I think that the additions that you made to the plan make a lot of sense. The amount of exposed foundation wall, is that, so, so there's a plan here in front of us that shows the elevations of a building.
Mm-hmm.
Is that exactly what we're going to be seeing here?
That's what they're proposing, yeah.
It's a little hard to read dimensionally, because the scale is so small, so what do we expose, have for an exposed foundation wall? And do you have a landscape plan also available?
I don't have a landscape plan.
Okay.
But I'd be glad to work with staff...
Yep.
...on a landscape plan, and we'll be glad to limit the amount of foundation exposed. It's a, it's a flat lot, so...
Yep, to no more than two feet. Does that sound...
Sure. That's not a problem. But it's, it's a pretty flat lot.
Yep. Okay. Like I said, I, I think this is going to be a great asset, I think, to the neighborhood, and I really like the, the restraint not to show something bigger on the lot, and not to really make it, it, it's a nice, nice gesture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
I, I agree. I think it's a, it's a good use of the space. I think the stacked parking, two to four, is, is something we always look to have. And as far as I see right now, those two conditions are in agreeable, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean?
And I agree with their sentiments as well. I think this is conducive to the neighborhood, and I think it's going to be a good use of the space for the proposed one family as opposed to, you know, multi-families that are bunched up in there, so, and I would like to also see landscape, you know, work with the landscape plan and...
Well, we'll work with staff on that.
Please, so. Thank you, Ms. Flood. Wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. There, there's a sign on, there's a chain-link fence on the Albion side of the property that has a sign on it that says it's a city park. There's an orange sign saying to call waste management to have the park cleaned up. So is that something the city just threw on there when they took possession of the property and just turned it into a park, or...
I have no idea. I can't answer that.
Yeah, I, I think I did see that sign also when I visited. I have no idea what the history of that sign is.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, I know the attorney Flood has determined that Talidge has possession of the property, but it just seemed odd to me that there was a sign there designating it as a, as a city park. Two other things. One is, now that we have this updated plan, I, I see that the house is oriented towards Albion Street, not West Fourth, and I'm wondering, the reason why I ask that is all the homes in that area are, you know, about the sidewalk and empty out onto the street, and this, you have, you have this pushed back from the street, so I would think it would look, it would fit more in the neighborhood if it, if it looked like all the other homes that have a front step that basically comes out, out onto the sidewalk of, of West Fourth.
Well, it's got a minimum front yard setback of ten feet, which we're meeting, so that's why it was ten feet back.
I mean, I understand. I'm just curious. I think, I just think it would look, once the project is done, it would look like it had been there all along, as opposed to something that's just been dropped into the lot, but...
Well, that's the reason for it, because of, because of the zoning requirement of ten feet, so...
The other, last question I have is about, I think there's four or five fairly mature trees on the property. They actually, I know it's the fall, so it's hard to tell if they're healthy or not. Do you know what the plan is with, for those? I...
If they, I'm sure if they don't interfere with the construction of the home, they'll stay. Like I said, we're willing to work with staff on coming up with a landscape plan, so...
look of that neighborhood where there, there really aren't any trees any, anywhere anymore, so if any, any or all of them could be...
And we'll try to save what we can.
Okay. That's it. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. So as far as conditions, I heard the landscape plan, was there a second one, or was it just the landscape plan?
And the foundation?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so those are the two conditions, Mr. Flood. Landscape plan and foundation exposure, but I, I think each of the board members expressed the same sentiments I had, and to be honest with you, when I went down there, I, that's a highly concentrated area. There's homes on top of homes on top of homes, and there's a lot of two families.
Yeah.
And there's really next to nothing for off-street parking. So when I saw these plans with the off-street parking, as you know, you've come before this board enough times, you know, parking is...
Is very important.
Especially in a condensed area like that, is very important. So to put a single family in, I also think is a benefit, and I can understand, as far as meeting the variance requirement because of the shape of the lot, and especially being on a corner lot.
Mm-hmm.
To Mike's point about, you know, it'd be nice to have it on West Fourth, but I think then you'd have a challenge with the parking right up front to start with, so I'm certainly in, in favor. And if there's no other comments by any of the other board members, I'd like to have a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand fifteen dash four zero for variance for sixty-six West Fourth Street with the following two conditions: that the applicant work with DPD staff to develop a landscape plan with an interest to save the four mature trees. Second is that the applicant limit the exposed foundation to no more than two feet.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Paglia?
Approved with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
And member Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Okay, Ms. Flood, been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Have a nice holiday, everybody.
Same to you. Okay, our next matter before us is ZB two thousand fifteen dash forty-four, special permit. The applicant is HCL Acquisition LLC. The property's located at seventy-one Jackson Street. The petition, the proposed project is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district and requires special permit approval from the zoning board under Article twelve, Table of Uses of the Low Zoning Ordinance. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead. Take your time setting up. Well, is it, I think, Judy, is usually we need something down there for the TV audience if they're watching this evening? Okay.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Fish. I am with the applicant, Adden Redevelopment LLC. We're the proposed owner. We also own the two adjacent mills next to it, Loft two-seven and Counting House Lofts. The plan here at seventy-one Jackson Street, the plan is to redevelop it into seventy-five units of mixed-income housing. It's an existing historic mill. It's the last component of the Hamilton Canal Lofts District, uh, complex that, that has been ongoing for the past couple of years. We, the, the building itself is about ninety-five thousand gross, ninety-five thousand gross square feet, and we're proposing mostly one-bedrooms, forty-seven one-bedrooms, eleven one-bedrooms with dens, and two, seventeen two-bedrooms. What we found at Counting House Lofts next door was that it was mostly young professionals living in these units, and the one-bedrooms just were a lot, were, were in greater demand in this area. We're applying for a special permit for the, for the use. We're appearing on next Monday in front of the Historic Board, and then in two weeks in front of the Planning Board. So do you want to join? I guess actually another key component, there are four affordable units at this site, seventy-one market-rate units. We received city home funds, which are tied to the four affordable units.
And the total number of units again is...
Seventy-five units.
Seventy-five, yep. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Craig Lezot with VHB. We're the Civil and Traffic Engineers. I just wanted to point out that we've, we, since we submitted our application to the city, we've received comments from staff. We've been working with the Planning Department. We have, we received some comments this afternoon. I, we're happy to meet with staff and work with them, and I'm confident that over the next little bit, we can certainly work through any of those comments related to off-site traffic or parking.
Okay. That's it?
That's it. We can answer questions if you'd like.
Okay. Nope. All set. All right. Open it up to the public. Does anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Favor? Hearing none? That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition? 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 Hearing none? That portion of public hearing is closed. Okay. You're gonna open it up to the, the board, and Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'm just glad to see this finally taking place. That mill is a, is a great location for this kind of use, and as you can see by the success of the other apartment, um, mill rehabs that have been done in the area, it just makes a lot of sense to continue that kind of use in this, in this spot, and I just look forward to seeing it happen. I'm glad that it's finally moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Sean?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the email that we just received this evening, oh, I'm sorry, talks about working on the intersection of Central, I guess it's Central, Middlesex, Church, and, yeah, Central, Middlesex, and Church.
Green Street.
Oh, and Green. Okay. So is that something that we would have, would we be voting on that to be done, this, you know, to, as part, as a condition for that to happen without knowing the, the results of the discussion, or...
The, the way this occurred is, this afternoon I received word that, you know, we're willing to negotiate traffic impact mitigation, and what I said was, if they wanna, if they wanna do traffic mitigation, you know, not, not go through the whole traffic study process and just do mitigation, that that intersection is very close to the site. It needs improvements, so it'd be a great fit if they were willing to do that. I, I think there's still some talks, like, like the gentleman just said, you know, there's still some negotiations to take place.
Okay, 'cause I, again, we just received that, this right before the meeting. I, I would actually, I, I don't think traffic and parking is going to be that big of an issue there. I mean, it's hard to say, but we also received a memo from the Planning Office about all the spaces that would potentially be available in the garage. When I went out to the site early on Sunday morning, I would say at least half of the Loft twenty-seven parking spaces were empty, so I don't think everyone got up at eight in the morning to have breakfast when I went out to the site. So I'm, I'm imagining where you also own that property, that some of those spaces might be assigned, 'cause there's definitely not enough spaces between the two mills, so...
So the parking, right now, the surface parking that's part of Loft two-seven, that will remain for Loft two-seven. Counting House Lofts now, we leave, we have two parking agreements for the residential and the commercial portions in the lot adjacent to the building, and this is, that's the same plan for Adden. When we did Counting House Lofts next door, we rehabilitated the bridge between Counting House and Adden, so that people in Adden, if, if the weather's bad or if it's cold outside, they can walk through the bridge and cut through Counting House so that they don't have to, 'cause it's such long buildings, they don't have to walk all the way around. So the intention is that we would work with the city to, to get a parking agreement for the parking lot. We don't intend on, there will be no surface spaces for this property, but that being said, it's important to note that we, we will own Counting House, Adden, Loft two-seven. They will be run as one property for the most part, so staff is going to be sized to handle all three projects, so we don't anticipate adding that many more employees. So the actual parking, it's not like we're gonna have a full staff for each of the individual three buildings. So we don't anticipate it being a problem. It's just gonna be using, the residents will be using existing parking spaces within the garage.
Another comment that the Planning Office had was in regard to the leasing office, I think, and I think we've kinda figured that out, because it's going to be apartments and not condos, so that would just remain an active leasing office within the building, correct?
So there will be a leasing space during the initial lease-up. Counting House Lofts next door, in the middle of the worst winter we've had, rented up in three and a half months, so it was a pretty quick process. The permanent leasing office will be in Loft two-seven.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see, the, one other thing I wanted to mention, which, I don't know if anyone here would be able to do anything about it, but that gatehouse, I would not want to be renting an apartment on one of the lower floors in the Adden Building and look out at that gatehouse that looks like it's about to collapse into the canal. In fact, there's a rowboat stuck in the, stuck under the gatehouse. I think it floated down from the Canal Street Bridge. It used to be tied under the bridge. I think the contractors left it there, and someone must have untied it, and now it's, it's stuck in the, in the gatehouse. So I guess, it has nothing to do with you, but again, I, I don't know if I'd wanna wake up and look out to see that, so I don't know if, just aside from this petition, if maybe someone in Planning could just look into that with either the Historic Board or, or internally? Or am I not allowed to ask you to do that, Judy?
No, that, that issue actually came up when we did the certificate of occupancy with the Conservation Commission for Counting House Lofts, the condition of the, of the debris in the canal, not specifically the, the building, and I think the issue may have been because there was some involvement with N.L. to actually get the debris cleaned up. I don't know about the, the County House building itself. We can...
I had a feeling it might have something to do with either N.L. or the previous landlord in that area who much of this property was taken from quite a few years ago by eminent domain by the city. I don't know if this is related to that or not. But again, the Counting House Lofts have, have this beautiful new park along the canal with some benches and, to, and some green space, and if you sit in that park and look at the canal, right now you see, like I said, a rowboat stuck in, in the, in the gates of that, you know, that, that adjusts the, the water level in the canal, so. But if, if you, now that you mentioned N.L., I can imagine that boat will be there for a while, so. But thanks.
We, we can try.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I haven't heard anybody ask any questions. Mike might have hit on a couple of things, but we received comments back from the city here. Did you get a, did they get a copy of all the city comments that came back, Judy? Okay. So, so for instance, Lisa DeMaio?
Yes.
City engineer.
Yes, sir.
She provided, you know, two pages of comments here, general stormwater and snow and ice. Did you review those?
We, we did. We received those last week, and we did review them.
Okay.
And I think we, we don't have any issue providing any of those or responding.
So you're, you're fine with every single comment that's here?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll condition that. One of the things I had asked the city was to provide, since we've had a few different developments in that area, what we're told a lot of times is people are gonna go to the city garage and get lease arrangements with the city, so I was curious to find out how many parking spots we actually have in that garage. And I received information back from the city, and also, so I have a good understanding now of what the total spots are and what's available, not available, who's tied to leases, what's the peak times, the, the open times, so I believe based on everything I received from Nicholas Navin, who's the parking manager, he apprised me of that, so I thank him for that, so I believe this petition should at least be able to, to meet that. And then the traffic engineer, now, you provided comments also in regards to the site. I don't think you've really had an opportunity to really speak on this. Are there any comments you wanna make? I know you've written a couple of different letters in regards to the site. Anything at all you wanna add based on your comments?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. The comments, my comments were mostly that with the Hamilton Canal District, as you all know, is moving forward, once that reaches full build-out, we also have the Judicial Center coming in. The Judicial Center, the, the signed plans I've seen only offer thirty parking spaces for the judges. The remaining, about four hundred and seventy people who would be coming to the Judicial Center would be left to park in the jam district somewhere. Those plans are already in, you know, further along, so my concern is that we, we have a lot of parking and traffic coming down the pike with the Judicial Center and the Hamilton Canal, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, while there is still some parking capacity now, and we, the traffic isn't too terrible now, we've already committed to, to a lot of development, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, this project kind of is, is, is measured against the development we've already committed to. Thank you.
And I know we talked about the Green Street area, this traffic study. Is that something you're asking for, or are you, well, I'll let you answer my question.
Yes, sir. I'm willing to, you know, it's, it's, it's just a compromise. It's, you know, I think if they're willing to upgrade that signal, it would be sufficient mitigation to traffic, so I'm, I'm more than happy to, to, to speak with them, and the mitigation, I guess you could put it as a condition, would be to upgrade the signal to, to have a flashing yellow arrow, and also a, a grid-smart video detection, and then just upgrade, you know, not build a whole new intersection, just upgrade what's there so it handles traffic.
Okay. Thank you. We also received comments from DPD talking about fire access. The board may wish to consider having the fire access lane indicated on the property with signage or striping to discourage blocking this limited area for access.
We'd be fine with signs.
I'm sorry?
We, we received that comment, and we would be fine to, or happy to put signs up that would mark the fire lane.
Okay. Landscape plan, was there one submitted? Or what, what is your plan for landscape?
So the, the site today?
Right.
The piece of property is primarily a building?
Yep.
With a very small amount of area outside?
Yep.
So there, there's very limited opportunity for landscaping. We could certainly...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So for that, I think what we, we can do is, is work with DPD. If this is approved, work with DPD as you're moving down the road and as things start to get cleared up.
Absolutely.
Any opportunities? Does that, does that sound okay with you, Judy? Yeah? Okay. Sewer and Water Services, I don't know if that was already covered by the city or striping to discourage blocking this limited area for access.
We'd be fine with signs.
I'm sorry?
We received that comment and we would be fine to, or happy to put signs up that would mark the fire lane.
Okay. Landscape plan, was there one submitted? Or what is your plan for landscape?
The site today, the piece of property is primarily a building with a very small amount of area outside.
Yep.
So there's very limited opportunity for landscaping.
I'm sorry. So for that, I think what we can do is work with DPD. If this is approved, work with DPD as you're moving down the road and as things start to get cleared up.
Absolutely.
Any opportunities? Does that sound okay with you, Judy? Yeah? Okay. Sewer and water services, I don't know if that was already covered by the city engineer. I'm going to, I believe that was covered in her comments. Dumpster, the applicants propose a dumpster area along the edge of the building. Such an installation must be adequate for the level of development of the site. So can you tell me what your plan is for the dumpster?
I can just comment that I believe what we've shown in the plan is consistent with what they believe is going to be required for the project. It's similar to what they're doing at the other sites.
Okay, so Judy, does DPD have any comments about the site? And then also how often the dumpster trucks will service the buildings for refuse removal? Have you received any comments back from the petitioner for that?
No, according to the comments here, we need a little more detail as to when the dumpsters are going to be serviced, how they're going to be serviced, and then have that approved with the solid waste and recycling coordinator.
Okay. So what do you currently, how do you handle refuse right now with the other two sites?
I'm actually, I'm not sure how many times a week they're picked up. But we can get that answer to you.
I guess I would envision if you're going to have three sites, they'd probably be all done at the same time, but
Yes.
you're not exactly sure.
No, I can confirm.
We haven't received any comments from the city that it isn't being picked up in an orderly fashion, so. So as far as where the, where it's going to be located, DPD's okay with the location of the dumpster? Judy?
I think we still want to confirm that with our
Solid waste.
Solid waste recycling person, yes.
Okay, that'll be conditioned. And the infamous snow storage. What's the plan for the snow storage? Again, since you've got two other buildings, what's your plan?
In big winters, excuse me. The small snow storage, again, for this site, it's, there's very little area that's not building. I believe that would be cleared either by hand or by snow blower. In bigger storms, if they had to, it would be picked up and trucked off-site, similar to what they do with other projects. There's limited area on the site to store big piles of snow.
That's, I'm not going to be facetious, but it is quite noticeable as soon as you drive in there. There's either parking or getting in and out of there, so.
Right.
So I would assume you have stuff trucked out of there if it gets to the point of, like last year's.
Yes.
Okay, so I believe that, so the other two buildings, I would assume the same process would be followed. I know this is real exciting stuff. I don't know if you addressed this in the beginning, we were talking about the number of units, but are these going to be condos for sale or rentals?
They will be operated as rentals, they'll legally be condominiums. But for the foreseeable future, they'll be operated as rentals.
But they're going to be sold as condos? Is that what you said?
There's the potential in the future, but they have historic tax credits on them, so they will be rentable.
Okay, so they're going to sell out?
For a minimum of five years.
All 75 would be rentals?
Yes.
And you said your customer base is primarily going to be the young professionals or college students?
Young professionals, that's what we saw. We don't have as many college students at Counting House. It's mostly young professionals.
Okay.
We had some people move from loft 27 over because the units are a little bit smaller.
Okay. All right. And Mike, I think there's also comment about refuse in the canal, I guess. Mike got a gold star for that one? Okay, I think that's, I think that's it. Judy, did you have any thing that I might have missed in regards, any comments the city had? Or concerns?
No, I think you covered everything.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I just ran through a litany of conditions there, which we'll summarize again. But the reason why you're here this evening is for a special permit for the, for this location, for adding 75 new units. I believe if you look at the requirements for the special permit and what's going on at the other two locations that you have, there's obviously a need for the area as far as rentals. I think it's all part of the city's master plan, especially for that Jackson Street area. So I believe the use is conducive. And with that, I believe you've addressed all of the issues that the board had. If you can just give me a couple of minutes, I want to run through the conditions, then I'll reread them back and make sure, you know, you understand exactly what I'm trying to say. Okay, thank you. Okay, if you can come back up and I'll reread them as, and hopefully. So the first condition will be, the comments came back from the city engineer, I believe, from Lisa De Mayo. Okay. The second condition will be the upgrade signal mitigation that the traffic engineer proposed with the flashing yellow. Okay. Then we have the fire access lane indicated with signage. Okay, and this came from the DPD. And also work with DPD for a future landscape plan. Next one would be the solid waste, working with solid waste coordinator over a final plan on the refuse, where the dumpster will be and the, how many times it'll be serviced. And the last one would be the snow storage plan. So those would be the, what do we have? Six? Six conditions. Are you in agreement with those six conditions?
My only comment, sir, would be on the traffic mitigation.
Yes.
I believe that the traffic engineer's comments were fairly general. And we're probably going to, when we get into that, we might get into some specifics. So if you could leave some.
Okay, so we'll handle that like we handle landscape plans. So work with the
Thank you.
traffic engineer on future traffic plans or traffic flow plans, mitigation plans.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman Bailey, did you want to add anything about leasing spaces requiring a lease in the city garage?
Well, I believe what I heard, oh, leasing spaces. Well, why don't I ask the question this way? What is the plan by the developer for the parking requirements? What is your plan there?
So we don't have a parking agreement yet with the city, but our intention is to enter into an agreement, as we did on Counting House lofts, with about one and a half spaces per unit.
Okay. So we'll add that as the seventh one. And I think what was just explained is kind of what I asked about the whole leasing arrangement. And I believe, at least I speak for the board, I think we understand now how those leases are established and how many are available, and I, based on the number of units there. And so the total, what was the total requirements? What would be the total requirements for the rentals?
Well, it's 75 units, two spaces, or?
So there's one in two bedroom, right?
One of two bedrooms. I mean, the maximum is two spaces per unit is the maximum.
Yep. No, I believe, you know, based on what came back from the parking department.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's one space per downtown.
Yep. Yep, okay, so the 75 will definitely be met by the, but we'll put that in the lease agreement with the city. Okay. Any other comments you want to make, sir? Okay. And I believe I already stated, meeting the conditions of the special permit. So with that said, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2015-44 for a special permit for 71 Jackson Street with the following seven conditions that the applicant will work, will comply with all comments from the city engineer's letter dated November 20th. Two, that the applicant will work with DPD to upgrade the signalization based on the comments from the engineer's letter submitted. Submitted November 23rd. Third comment, third condition is that the fire access lane on the property will be marked with appropriate signage. Fourth condition is that the applicant will work with DPD to incorporate appropriate landscaping on-site. Number five, that the applicant will work with the city DPD solid waste coordinator to provide appropriate dumpster location. Sixth is that the applicant will provide a snow removal or snow storage plan on-site. And seven, that the applicant will work with the city to develop a leasing agreement for parking at the city parking garage.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Paglia?
Approved with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Okay, you've been approved with conditions, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we start our next petition, I'm going to have the board take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you.
I told him he needs to turn up.
I'm just coming over to pull some chairs around.
There's something, I don't know if somebody, or something, why they start, and then they start and they bump into each other, and then the ball ends up somewhere, and then they start. I figured this out once I was there, and I saw how much time they spent extra days, even if this was a dirty school. They're comparing to soccer and soccer. Those guys, when they play soccer, they have to make decisions, make certain decisions in their run.
Hey Judy?
Four minutes and eleven seconds.
See? Isn't that ridiculous?
The Wall Street Journal.
Really?
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 But again, you know, when you compare football to soccer, and what these soccer players do, and they're playing a tour, and they don't get to stop and catch their ball after a certain period of time. And they see this, they have, they have their team, they have, he doesn't see them. And they have, yeah. It's actually, yeah. That is, that is, that is, that is.
It's different games.
Soccer, it's constantly, it's football. They stop, they pay, their strategy.
It's a sport, it's a different game.
My God, very boring, but people love it.
That's, that's, that's.
Wait to see the game.
It's too long.
Come across.
It's like, hello, Paul.
It's why I'm sitting.
It's safe.
Hello, Paul.
It's why I'm sitting.
It's like, I'm not, I'm not.
It's like, it's, it's, it's.
It's like, hello, Paul.
It's why I'm sitting.
It's like, it's, it's, it's.
Tickets open, open, right, I'm asking, yes, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not
a minute's conversation, but one is making.
Yeah.
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 You have to keep getting those, you're better off being like, yeah.
Can I take that? Wait, you can take that one.
It might be better off.
Okay, all right, okay.
Always a joke.
The next petition is ZB 2015-43, and the petition's a special permit. The applicant is GPG Vanham LLC. Property is located at 557 Vanham Ave. And the petition, the proposal consists of the conversion of an existing building formerly used as a nursing home to eighteen residential units. The proposed project is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district and requires special permit approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Article 4.52, non-conforming uses of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Mr. Geary, how are you? So, back in September, we had a preliminary review, which you and your applicant were here, and we discussed a few different issues. So, could you update the board where we are as of today, please?
Yes, I can. And for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Attorney Stephen Geary. I represent GCG Acquisitions, Mr. Said Coats, and we were before this board on a preliminary hearing on, in September of this year. At that time, we presented a plan to this board seeking approval for a special permit for a, a nonconform, pre-existing, non-conforming use that is less burdensome than the current zoning use that's at that property now. As the board is well aware, and I'm sure everybody here is well aware, that was a nursing home. That building was built, I believe, sometime in nineteen sixty-three, if I'm correct on that, and it had operated as a nursing home for the, at this particular place for the last several decades, and it was a hundred-and-one-bed nursing home. My client, Mr. Coats, is an experienced real estate developer. He has his bachelor's and master's degree in electrical engineering from RPI. He has his master's in business administration from Mass Institute Technology, MIT, and he has significant experience in this area. This is not his first project by any means. He has done projects far larger than this and projects smaller than this. Prior to acquiring this property, Mr. Coats thoroughly researched the zoning where the locus of the building is to determine that it is a building that would fit the needs of that neighborhood and meet all the criteria for a special permit by converting this into single-family, high-end rental units. And that is his plan to do that. Mr. Chairman, we presented a plan to the board back in September. Again, that was not a public hearing, that was preliminary. There was no input from the neighbors, and I know there were a lot of neighbors here who are eager to address this project, but I don't think anybody can question that this project is by far a less detrimental, less burdensome use than the prior use. I believe that's been authenticated and validated by not only Mr. Coats' traffic engineer that he hired privately, but that was also confirmed, I believe, by our own traffic engineer here in the city of Lowell, where unquestionably it is a lesser use, especially as it relates to parking and traffic. And it's obvious why. I mean, it's common sense, in a way, that you had a nursing home with a hundred-and-one beds, with everything that's attendant with that. I mean, you have shifts of workers and nurses coming at all hours, and three P.M. shift, it was a common shift, and that's the busiest time in that area. You have nurses and doctors and family members visiting. You have ambulances and nine-one-one emergency responders going to that unit, going to that premises regularly for all those years, and now the proposed use is something that's entirely consistent with that single-family zoning in that neighborhood. It's residential in nature, and this is exactly what this is going to be. Mr. Coats is going to target the, the professional crowd of the hospital, the academics of the university, and people who want to live in a very nice place, in a very nice part of the city of Lowell. Mr. Coats also is well aware, and was well aware when he purchased this property, of the strength of the Pawtucketville neighborhood groups. He understood, and he researched, how important the neighborhood was to these folks, and that's why he wants to be here. I understand this, you know, I anticipate there's gonna be some remarks or some questions about this project, but he is entitled to a special permit pursuant to the zoning if he can show that this use is not substantially more detrimental and burdensome than the prior use. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, it's the opposite of that. It's far less detrimental, it's far less burdensome to the community and to that neighborhood, and it will serve an important public good. I mean, there would be jobs generated during the construction of this project, so it services the, it addresses the economic issue. Mr. Coats is going to spend well over a million dollars in renovating this property, and most of the renovations are gonna be to the interior. So, I know we presented a plan at the last meeting, so I'd like to just update the board as to the new plan. So, you have the plans in front of you, and we have a plan, I have a plan in front of me, and this is no longer, I know, I think Mr. McCarthy...
If I can just stop you for a minute. Do you have anything, as far as the plans, new to submit to us this evening, or are we just gonna work off the past plans that you had at the first meeting?
No, this, you should have the new plans. There was some... Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought everybody had these plans already. I thought these plans was substituted from the old ones a few weeks ago, but...
Yeah, I asked about this, actually, this evening, and so how many, so each of the board members has one, you have one. Do you have at least one extra, if any members of the public wanted to take a look at? Do you have an extra one or not?
Not at this moment.
I did have some in the neighborhood, but I don't have any at this moment.
Yeah, okay.
There may be some in the planning office, possibly.
So, I guess, you know, if you, as you're going through, we'll call it, you know, any adjustments from the original meeting, if you can just be clear about exactly what's changed or what recommendations you're putting in, and then at that point, if we can get a, somewhat get a copy to the members of the public, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so if you're looking at the plans I gave, the residence at Pawtucketville is what, is what the proposed name is, and if you're looking at the Vanham Ave elevation, the changes to the exterior of the building are going to be a new roof, the entire span of that roof, new doors, new windows, all new siding. On the back, new patio and decks where there's no relief requested and no encroachment on anything. On the front of the building, you'll see the retaining wall along the front, that's a sort of not aesthetically pleasing as it sits right now in its current state. That is gonna be a replacement retaining wall with the stoneage, stonework that you can see on there now. Landscaping plan will be, we propose as a condition that they work with the landscape architect and come up with an agreeable plan. If you look at the rear elevations, on this far right side, you will see, that's also gonna, that's a dilapidated retaining wall there. That's gonna be also a replacement retaining wall matching the stonework that you see in the front. If you then turn the page and you go to the Meadowview side, there's gonna be an all-new retaining wall along that side. And again, this plan is actually how it will be, this is not inspirational or a proposal. This is, this is kind of, this is what it will be. That retaining wall will be added, and that creates definition and separation from the neighborhood. And again, I said on the, on the back, there's, all those decks will be new decks and composite in material. And on the right elevation, if you look below Meadowview, there'll be some, there's talk of screening on the Woodbine Ave side, and he's willing to do that. I think he was talking with the planning department about possible screening, and that's something that he would consider, that's usually recommended that it be avant arrides or something that would make sense in that area. If you turn two more pages, the biggest change that we're proposing is that it had recently been verified that if you look at the site that says Vanham Ave, again, I'm looking at the, the print, not the color, where it says Vanham Ave, and it has the parking, which I think...
A1.
Yes, A1. If you look on the right side, the parking spots sections are numbered. If you look on the right side, and if you can draw a line down the Woodbine Ave side, and let's call one west and one east, obviously, the west is to the left, the city solicitor has verified that because it's a paper street, that my client has use of anything on the westerly side, which are the parking spots that he has shown, and the whole amount of parking spots that he had pursuant to what he purchased, which what the, the nursing home had was the thirty-six. Now, it appears as though there's twenty-seven, which would allow him thirteen units as opposed to the eighteen. We would still like approval of up to eighteen conditioned upon providing parking, without any variances, parking to show adequate parking on the lot if he has it somewhere else or requires it somewhere else. So, right now, the biggest change, and there was no time to make these changes to the plan because we were waiting for verification from the law department, is that he has twenty-seven spots, it's ADA compliant, and that would allow him thirteen units. That would be taken away, the, all those spots to the east of, the east side of the paper street that has always been used by, you know, the nursing home and I think the neighbor next door. So, that would be the biggest proposed change.
So, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
You're showing on this plan on page A1, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. So, is it sixteen on the rear, and then one handicap?
Yeah, if you look, there's one kind of hidden, there's seventeen on the rear, there's sixteen, and then if you look at the one kind of in between the rear and the building, you see the number one circled?
Yeah.
So, that's seventeen. And then the same thing on the westerly side, let's call it the westerly side of the paper street, there's nine.
The one up, the one up in front, that's what I'm missing.
Yeah, see that one up in front?
So, we had, so I guess, Judy, I'll ask the question, and I was gonna let it go, but I guess I gotta ask now. Previously, I thought, how many handicap do they require? Is it based on a total number of units, or?
Yeah, the number of handicap spaces required is based on the total number of spaces, and I think he needs one space for twenty-four?
I think twenty-six to fifty is two spaces, which he has. One's not marked on here because the plan wasn't updated.
That's, yes, yes, it's two, two handicap spaces because he's over twenty-six.
That's fine, 'cause two was shown before. I see the one in back, where's the second one?
The, the second one's in the front right.
Okay, so that's the one that's not, that's not marked with the handicap?
Right, right. So, it's ADA compliant.
Okay, that's fine.
At twenty-six, at thirteen units, which is substantially less than the proposed eighteen. And again, we, you know, whether or not he can get parking for eighteen is, is yet to be determined, but we know that he is parking for the thirteen. So, you know, that would, we'd like the approval of the thirteen with conditional approval up to eighteen conditioned upon showing that we have valid and ample parking to support that pursuant to the code without any relief.
So, based on this plan, the only opportunity is the nine that you don't, you can't have right now, is that?
Yeah, and there may be other places on the, on the lot that he could find them, but he doesn't anticipate, you know, doing that at this point. So, the, the question is, you know, what, what, what happens with the other nine? The nursing home had always used that, the nursing home paved it, lined it, plowed it, maintained it.
Right, well, that was my concern at our first meeting. When I saw that paper street, I said, if it's existing, where's its start and end? And then I know the city didn't come back till, I think, yesterday or whatever with the answer, or on Friday. So, I understand why the plans couldn't be totally updated.
Yeah, we almost had the engineer done, but he couldn't get it quite done, and we didn't want to bring it in piecemeal, but we accept a condition, you know, to have a finalized plan.
Right.
Outlining everything specifically.
Okay.
To that.
Yep.
There were, you know, the, the, I guess, to address some of the issues that were brought up by the, I think the fire department had checked off, they have no issues with it. And, and there wouldn't be, it's sprinkled, it's sprinkled for a nursing home, it's gonna maintain, and I think the sprinkler systems work, they've been tested, and I don't think the fire department has any issue with it, I wouldn't think that the police department has any issues with it, and as far as the, the traffic engineer who's here tonight, I think he verified our own private traffic engineer's report unless there's anything new there, and my client is willing to address any other concerns that any other departments may have had, including engineering.
Okay, so, the new handouts tonight, the only, I guess I'll call it, updates slash changes would be the exterior presentation that you ran through, which was on the first two pages.
Yep.
The third page, even though it's labeled A4, what is A4 actually showing us? Which is the third page in, but it's labeled A4? This aerial view, what's, was this showing us anything different from?
No, but I do wanna, I do wanna just finish addressing some of the changes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the board had, I, somebody made a comment to take out the steel barrier, the steel guardrail, that's, that's been removed in the back. Mr. Coats went around and knocked on at least a hundred doors and spoke to all the people around there. Some of the concerns he had from the neighbors in the back were that the fence was dilapidated in the back, and when it was a nursing home, they'd hear yelling and screaming, they'd find garbage all over the yard, and the pickups were at five o'clock in the... find garbage all over the yard, and the pickups were at 5:00 in the morning beeping and waking them up. That's not going to be the case, he's actually installing a vinyl stockade fence in the back, and that's also reflected on the plan. So that's another, he, he's made substantial improvements since September, a lot of what was recommended by this board and a lot of what he got from speaking to the neighbors. And, you know, there's, whenever there's a change, there's always, you know, a certain amount of anticipated fear from people who aren't aware of exactly what's gonna go there, and the point of a public hearing is to, to explain that to everybody, whether they're for or against this project. And I do want to say that of, of all the people I've represented over the years, Mr. Coats has done more due diligence on this project than anybody. He has gone around, he's done the legwork himself, he's spoken to just about anybody that would listen to him, he's hosted a neighborhood meeting of which some people showed up, he sent out, I think, 250 invitations to it, he's gone to their neighborhood meetings, he's knocked on doors, he has, he has papers signed by neighbors saying they'd prefer this over another use, and he has done his homework on this, he has invested a substantial amount of money with a substantial amount of money yet to be invested in it, and the project makes a lot of sense. It makes sense from a residential standpoint, it makes sense citywide, it makes sense Pawtucketville-wide. The only argument that we've heard through the grapevine against it is, you know, put single-family homes there, and I think that was brought up at, at the preliminary hearing, and it just, it doesn't make any sense to do that, it makes no economic sense, nobody would purchase this building to put up, to tear it down and put up two or three single-family homes, it doesn't make any sense, and, you know, the city didn't do it themselves, and no private investor would ever do that. So the building is there, the building is a complete dilapidated eyesore. Even when it was a functioning building, it wasn't a great neighbor to that neighborhood. This proposal changes all that, and changes it for the foreseeable future. This is going to be high-end granite countertops, high-end residential units, that are gonna service a desperate need of housing in the city. In the master plan, it's something that was thought out in the master plan, and even the Pawtucketville Neighborhood Association's own plan. You know, this is what, what we seek to get, good residents living in the area, as opposed to commercial or industrial or medical uses for a facility that's right in the heart of a residential area. And those are just a few things that I can think of to anticipate what possible opposition there may be to this project, and, and I'm hoping that the opposition that I think is, is here is because they weren't completely aware of what was going on in this project, or what the intention of Mr. Coats and his company was. So, again, Mr. Coats is here to address any issues, we're here to answer any questions that any of these neighbors have, we respect, entirely respect their right to speak, whether they, whether it's, makes sense or it doesn't, what they say, they're entitled to their opinion, but we're basing this project, Mr. Chairman and members, on facts. We're not talking about possibilities, we're not talking about what-ifs, we're basing it on facts, and the fact is, and it's indisputable, that this use is far less burdensome and far less detrimental than it's currently zoned for, and we respectfully ask the board to consider approval. And again, Mr. Coats is here to address any particular issues, and he's far more well-aware of what's going on there than I am, so he'd be able to shed more light than I could.
Okay.
And if you could just address the board?
Sure, absolutely, yep. Yes, Mr. Coats?
Good evening. Good evening, Said Coats, 557 Varnum Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Chairman Bailey, and to the board. So, as Attorney Geary pointed out, I have done a lot of due diligence, I have knocked on over 100 doors of the closest homeowners to the property, I have held an open community meeting at the Lowell Senior Center on November 10th, this was open to all citizens of Lowell that would have valuable input, or even if they're in opposition. Opposition sometimes is good because it gives you valuable feedback that you need to confront, and the plans that are in front of you has all of that incorporated into it, that's already baked in there. The parking, we had some feedback during the pre-application scoping, the feedback regarding parking was, make sure that you have legal rights to use it. And so Assistant City Solicitor Ken Rossetti has confirmed that this is a paper street, and we do have legal rights to use the Westerly portion of Woodbine Avenue. That's why, as of that recent development, we have updated the plans. We have no intent to create a project or create a scenario that requires additional on-street parking. From speaking with the neighbors, I did, I did provide during the pre-application scoping satellite images from 2012 and 2013 showing parking on Varnum Avenue, Meadowview Drive, where parking is allowed, mind you, but it's not in etiquette, and it's not in the character with the neighborhood. So that's something that this project will eliminate. And again, kind of going back to 4 dot 5 dot 2, eliminating that on-street parking is in the spirit of allowing you to see that this is a less detrimental use. Also, I do have some information regarding kind of economic data that I had received from the city. So what you'll notice from 2010 census data is that Pawtucketville has an average age that's a little bit higher than the rest of the city for its residents, it also has a higher homeownership rate. These are all things that I think are good positive attributes of a community, and so the tenant base that we're looking to attract are of the same cloth. We're trying to stay in character with the neighborhood, we're looking to attract faculty, staff, and administration from UMass Lowell, doctors, nurses, residents at UMass, sorry, at Lowell General. Chancellor Maloney at UMass Lowell actually has a live-in Lowell initiative that she's pushing right now, and so I've been in touch with the school, and with your approval of this project, I will be applying to become a partner of the UMass Lowell Live-In Lowell program. It is a program where the school provides an economic incentive to their employees to live in Lowell, whether they purchase a home or whether they rent. I'm hoping that they'll rent at the residences at Pawtucketville. There's a matching landlord incentive also. So not only will the school give their employees money, but I will, as a partner of this program, be also giving their employees money to live in the residences at Lowell, and that's only possible with your approval. I have a quick handout, just kind of giving some of the facts of that program, if I may. So, as you can see, this is a real program, the date on that press release from UMass Lowell is from September, this is real information, this is happening now. So those are the types of people that we're looking to attract to this project, and with it being an upscale project that isn't too upscale to eliminate too many people, we do feel that we can attract enough professionals from the area, just from UMass Lowell and Lowell General. Also, to address further changes that we made to the plans, we ended up giving up three parking spaces that were in the street, you may recall, so these plans also reflect the fact that we deleted those three parking spaces. We added a curb with an island, a grass island, I think that that was valuable feedback that Mr. McCarthy had for us, and so we incorporated that into the plans. The steel guardrail, as Attorney Geary mentioned, that was positive feedback that came from the board, that's now incorporated into these plans. So we're going into this with our ears open and eyes open, and we're trying to present a great project, and I think we have been successful in that, and I hope you feel the same.
Thank you, sir. All right, before we open it up to the public, do you have any, I know you provided a summary of, based, yep, based on the overview, it was done with the traffic study that the petitioner put together, and I'm sure each of the board members reviewed your notes, could you just provide, just a summary of what you looked at and what you came back with, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I, I did review the letter that the applicant provided, and my conclusion is that, you know, I, I agree with their, with their conclusion, is a, a nursing home, the previous use, which was a nursing home, is a high-traffic generator, you know, like, like they were talking about the employees coming in, the ambulances coming in, visitors, so, so a nursing home is a high, high-trip generator, and based on the number of units, which at the time was 18, it was substantially less. If he goes down to even 13, that's even, you know, that's, that's, that's substantially less. So from a traffic perspective, I, I believe this, this proposal is, is much less detrimental to the neighborhood than the nursing home was, so that's my conclusion.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have anything else you want to add at this point, Attorney Geary?
I, I don't, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, but I'm willing to answer any questions you might have throughout the proceedings.
Okay, I just wanted to ask before we open it up to the public. Okay, is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Yes, ma'am?
Lyd Brown Zuna's, 27 Jackson Street in Lowell.
Okay.
Formerly of 43 Dunbar Avenue in Lowell, and I want to speak in favor of this project because I lived on Dunbar Avenue, and I know it's a very desirable location in the city of Lowell. In fact, several months ago, within one hour, I sold my home, the rail to left at 5:30 and my home was sold at 6:30. From that point, I had to find somewhere to live. I looked all around Lowell, and due to the success of the university, there's not a lot of housing left in Lowell, especially when you're looking for a safe place to be, safe place to park. I looked at things that were $1,400, and I drove by and never even went into them. So I think as a place that's going to improve the nature of the, of the neighborhood and bring some high-end units into the city, something that I would probably look into myself, and have it be in an desirable neighborhood where you can walk to the river, walk to the university, walk to the hospital, I'm in perfect favor of it. I have done a little research on this gentleman, and for, in my opinion, as a lifelong resident of Lowell, working for the city for many years, having been here before doing projects in the city of Lowell, I understand the process, but I also want to say, anybody, in my opinion, that comes to this city to make a major investment in our city and our neighborhood deserves to be recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Troy DePisa, longtime resident of that area, we are at 120 Topman Road. By profession, I'm an architect, and, you know, just looking at those plans, I mean, they just make sense, you know, been an architect for 20 years and working a lot with blighted sights, you know, what Mr. Coats has, you know, really designed there, it just, it just makes sense. As we know, in Lowell housing, it is a, there are a lot of students coming to Lowell, a lot of professions coming to Lowell. From '97, you know, living in Lowell, there wasn't too much in Lowell, just to be honest. Right now, Lowell is really booming, you know, people are really, you know, wanting to come into the city, and they need a place to really live, and I think what is being presented here makes a lot of sense. And, you know, my wife actually was a nurse, she used to actually work at that same, you know, nursing home, maybe every nursing home on Varnum Ave, and I think there are plenty more nursing homes on Varnum Ave, and this really makes again, once again, a lot of sense as a, as a residential project. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Vidan Garg. I started my life in Lowell as an international student at UMass Lowell. I started with paying $500 as rent for every month, and I, last month, I was paying $1,625. So I looked at the plans which Mr. Coats had, and it, it makes perfectly sense to me because right now, I'm not a student, I'm a young professional, I work for a engineering hardware company, and I work in Jemsworth, I live in Lowell, it's been five years, and I look forward for a high-end renters apartments. Well, recently, I invested in Lowell, I bought a property myself because I, I, I feel that Lowell has good potential, and I look forward to living here for a very long time. So I think what Mr. Coats is doing and the proposal that is on the floor, it, it makes sense because I have a lot of friends who are willing to invest in Lowell, who are willing to move in Lowell, but if you look at Pawtucket side, the side is filled with students, it's not a, it's not an appropriate environment for young professionals to live there because there's a lot of student activity. If you look in the downtown, downtown has very less apartments to offer for renters, so there's a good demand for young professionals, and I think this project will make good sense, and it can be a benefit for Lowell.
What, what address are you at, sir?
I'm sorry?
What address do you live at?
I live off right of School Street on Bower Street, which is very close to
Yep.
the mentioned property.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Mike Stack, I live at 329 West Meadow Road with my wife, two kids and dog. I've been there for 12 years, and professionally, I'm an intern architect, and I own one of the doors that the developer came in and knocked on, and so I just wanted to go over a few points on, on why I support it. I think in the neighborhood, there's already precedent, there's already, across from the hospital, there's apartments there. If you go down the hill a little bit, Grand View, there's Grand View, there's luxury apartments there with a high occupancy rate, so already, it's a community that has apartments and has, like, there's an appetite for, for this type of project. Second, the fact that he is going, the developer is going for apartments instead of condos shows his long-term commitment to this community and this project, it isn't just some quick flip and dump, you know, as a, as a cash grab. He's invested in, you know, the community, and obviously, you could see by the renderings that he's willing to spend the money to kind of take something that's existing and, and, you know, really beautify and kind of put a gem in the neighborhood. Another part I want to talk about, which hasn't been brought up, is as a professional, I deal with energy and environmental issues. Ideally, what we always like to see is adaptive reuse of a space, so the fact that this building is there, it's built, and all he's doing is really, you know, he's keeping the majority of the exterior envelope and seal, you know, he's just kind of cleaning it up. This is kind of an ideal use environmentally for, for any building, like, this is kind of the, the dream project we, we look for. And I think that, you know, as a designer, you know, what he's shown really takes the best advantage of what's existing there, and, you know, to, you know, take that when there is a good option and to, you know, knock it all down for a few single families, I think it sets, it sets a dangerous precedent for someone who's willing to come into the community and spend money, you know, if we squash this, it really, you know, other people that want to come in and spend their money and invest in the community, what's to say? Why would they? You know, if someone can come in and just say, no, you know, you've met all the criteria, but, you know, we don't like it, so, you know, I understand that people have preferences, but, you know, in my opinion, I walk by it all the time going to Dunkin' Donuts, it's a, I think this is a great use for the site. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? Favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Keshia Mora, and I'm speaking on behalf of the property owner in the lot adjacent to 557. Thank you very much.
What?
Who was unfortunately not able to show up this afternoon, I'm her granddaughter, Keshia Mora.
So what address is that? I'm sorry?
535 Varnum Avenue.
535, okay.
Yes, so we are- Yes. So we are the current abutters to the land, the parking lot space between five-fifty-seven and five-thirty-five Varnum Avenue. And since the purchase of this property that we live on in the early nineties, we've had a lot of issues with parking and people coming in and out. One of our biggest concerns at the moment is obviously parking and the snow. When the winter comes, there's always issues with plowing and, and all of that stuff, which has, you know, created a lot of issues in the past. So we are very concerned about that as well. I do want to take a moment because I do feel that this plan is actually something that's, that's very good. And we can see that there, there is due diligence here. As a family, I'm representing my family. So we did attend the meeting on November tenth and we do respect that, you know, obviously, this is something that would be good for the community. But for us as current neighbors, this is something that has caused major issues. We have presented petitions in the past. Once again, Sandra Beltran, which is my grandfather, grandmother, I'm sorry, trying to deal with this issue with parking. We do have four spaces that are ours that are on the land that he's planning to use for spaces with the parking that he has. Another issue that we have is that the right elevation, if you turn to the second page, is facing our home. One of the concerns that we really think is a big issue is that there's going to be a lot of noise. And another situation that, that kind of comes up is that before, when it was a nursing home at night, there was a lot of people who would leave. So the parking lot was pretty empty at night. So now we're concerned that the parking lot is going to be full at all times. And so this is something that we are very concerned about. Other than that, that's pretty much what we have to say on our behalf as neighbors. So we are very much so opposed and we don't think that this is going to be beneficial to us whatsoever.
So where, where are currently the four parking spots that you believe belong to your grandparents?
So our parking spots are on the left side. We have four parking spots that are on the side of our house, which is, I believe he said that he could use, we're on the right side, yeah. So he's using all the parking lots that are towards him and we have four parking lots that are towards our home, which obviously, he's not counting to use with his plan at the moment. But we are concerned because, you know, it's, we go in and out through our home through that same area. And so we do feel that this is going to be an issue that's going to continue from here on out, which we have tried to deal with in the past with the petitions and all of that. And we haven't gone and answered since the mid, early nineties that we moved into this home. And so we just find it pretty insane that, you know, someone can just come in, you know, and, and create this plan and get it favored to their needs when we have been fighting for this for, for over twenty years that we've lived on this property. So that's pretty much where our concerns lie. Once again, I, it's, it's great. It's a pleasure to speak on your behalf. I'm a student from Suffolk University Law. So it's, it's amazing to have the opportunity to speak tonight in front of all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is John Hamblit. I live at four-nine-five Varnum Avenue. And usually, I speak to you on behalf of the neighborhood as co-chair of the Pawtucket Ville Citizens Council, but tonight, I take that hat off. I own property at five-hundred West Meadow Road and I am an abutter.
Yep.
Before I get started with some of our, my concerns, I did want to note for the record that, one, we have not seen any revised plans. The ones you got two and a half minutes ago, we haven't seen. The second is, I do question, there were a series of comments made by DPD engineers, traffic engineers, PEs on the twentieth and twenty-third, and I do question how they were made without plans. And the third question that I'd like to make for the record is, it's my understanding that the land use boards are required to receive all documents five business days prior to a public meeting. So we are at a little disadvantage because there was a flurry of correspondence on Friday and even today. So pardon me and pardon some of the others if some of our information is not up to date. The question is, is a thirteen, eighteen, or twenty apartment structure less detrimental than the nursing home? The question is not, is a thirteen, eighteen, twenty unit structure less detrimental than a boarded-up building? The boarded-up building has been boarded up for over a year now under the ownership of Mr. Coats. So what we are comparing is an active, working nursing home providing care for our neighbors versus the thirteen, eighteen, or twenty unit apartments. So we are governed by the six criteria found in zoning eleven-point-three-point-two. Judy outlines these in her previous notes. She released some new notes, but I don't think this part of it changes. This project fails to prove that it is less detrimental in four of the six criteria. It fails to prove that it is less detrimental socially, economically, or in meeting our community needs, specifically, traffic flow and safety, including parking. I'm not going to be raising questions about three and four. It does, it has an adverse impact on the natural environment and an adverse fiscal impact to the city. As you know, thirty percent of all the developable land in Lowell is in western Pawtucket Ville. And western Pawtucket Ville is primarily single-family homes. High-density structures in western Pawtucket Ville equal high crime rates. If you look at the Lowell Police Department com stats, you will see that there are two particular areas in west, western Pawtucket Ville that have significantly higher crime rates. One reason is because western Pawtucket Ville has such a low crime rate, we don't have the police presence that you do in a higher-density area such as downtown Lowell. There is no desperate need for housing in Lowell. We currently have an eight-percent vacancy rates in apartments, which is adequate. Therefore, the statement that there is a desperate need is not true. That nursing home, for all its faults, was a community resource and they were a community partner, just like Lowell General, just like the Megan's House, and just like Duville Manor. We worked there, our neighbors worked there, and they cared for our seniors. Many of us had relatives in the nursing home. It met our community needs. And when compared to the previous use, this project fails to exceed social, economic, or community needs. I disagree with Nick. I believe the traffic study is inconclusive. If somebody tells me that there might be a hundred-and-eleven or there might be six-hundred-and-fifty-five and somebody else says there are going to be a hundred-and-nineteen, you don't know, do you? You don't know if there's going to be more traffic. You're guessing. There are a hundred employees, but not all at the same time, and that's what this study assumes. There were three shifts plus two on the weekends. What were there, twenty, twenty-five employees? What would that do to the statistics? It's entirely possible that this nursing home would be significantly less detrimental than twenty apartments. I hadn't even thought of the parking situation. So now we know positive proof that it is going to be more detrimental to some of the neighbors who currently use that for parking. There are only seventeen parking spaces, not thirty-six, not twenty-seven. This was originally advertised as having thirty-two. We met with city council at a city council meeting and that was corrected. Every person bidding on that auction knew that there were seventeen parking spaces, that Woodbine Avenue was not available. This developer does not own or have any right to use Woodbine Avenue. Late last year, early, I'm sorry, early in spring this year, there was a request for abandonment of Woodbine Avenue and that was denied. Here's the excerpt from the city council agenda of May twelfth, two thousand fifteen, item seven-point-three, item number two thousand fifteen slash two-eighty-seven under miscellaneous. Dr. Sandra Beltran, who, whose granddaughter you just heard from, requested the acquisition of abandoned land between five-thirty-five and five-fifty-seven Varnum. The Pawtucket Ville Citizens Council spoke in opposition to the abandonment. It was a violation of four city-approved plans that advocated wildlife corridors, greenways, greenways, and neighborhood trails. Let me read to you what those four plans say. The Lowell master plan, develop a greenway system, including the neighborhood trail between the state forest and the north bank of the Merrimack River. The Lowell two thousand five open space plan, recognize and maintain the wildlife corridor between the Lowell Drake and Tinsborough Forest and the Merrimack River. Parcels along this corridor should be protected whenever possible. Parcels along this corridor should be protected whenever possible. The two thousand six Pawtucket Ville master plan, the city will identify and protect wildlife corridors through acquisitions and easements within the neighborhood, paying specific attention to land in and around Pawtucket Boulevard and scattered sites along Varnum Ave. In two thousand nine, the city took five acres of land and entered into a conservation restriction with Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust and trustees of the reservation. I think Jane Calvin, the director of Lowell Parks and Conservation is here tonight. That ultimately was put out onto the market for bid and the Varnum family was the highest bidder. They now own Hawk Valley Farm directly across from the nursing home. The Lowell City Council has agreed to a conservation restriction in this area. Sorry, the picture's not bigger. But the red at the top is the state forest, the yellow line is the wild, wildlife corridor that goes down behind the schools. There is a yellow line with red on either side. That's Woodbine Avenue. Crosses Varnum Avenue, it goes straight through Hawk Valley Farm. Over Clay Pit Brook, there is an ancient stone bridge that lies in pieces on either side of the, the, the brook. And then it crosses Regatta Field. That is the vision. In addition to the Pawtucket Ville Citizens Council, the Varnum family also spoke in opposition to the abandonment. They established Woodbine Avenue ownership, that it belonged either to the trustees of Woodbine Cemetery or to the Varnum family. Sorry, you can't read it. This is a memo. It is a memo from Lisa DeMayo, who is our city engineer, to Christine O'Connor, who is the city solicitor. I have copies, but I'll read it to you. It's dated June thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, which coincidentally is one month after the abandonment hearing at city council. The subject is request to abandon land between five-thirty-five and five-fifty-seven Varnum Avenue. This office recommends that this land not be abandoned. The land in question is intended as an access to the Woodbine Cemetery. The cemetery division concurs the need to keep the access open. We've already talked about the natural environment. Parking on Woodbine Avenue associated with a project will have a negative impact on the wildlife corridor, on the greenway, and on the walking trails. Potential fiscal impact, in the earlier master plan, a complete financial analysis was done of various living scenarios. One of those scenarios is an apartment complex. The scenario they looked at was in a different part of town, but it was one, two, and three-bedroom apartments such as being proposed under the newest, as-of-today proposal. The apartment complex, as, such as the one that's being suggested, will have a negative net financial impact of between four thousand to sixty thousand dollars a year. If you approve this, the city of Lowell will lose four thousand to sixty thousand dollars a year. I can't read it. You probably can't either, but there's the table, table two-eight, fiscal impacts of residential developments in Lowell, and the two items that confirm that these apartments will cost us tax-paying citizens money. This project does not meet the criteria set out in eleven-point-three-point-two. Seventeen parking spaces allow for only eight apartments. You're all familiar with the land, land board, land use board's plan change policy and what it means if there's a substantial change. It's referred to in Mr. Coats' document. This creates a significant change from the proposed plans of eighteen apartments. Eighteen to eight is what, fifty-five, sixty percent? A sixty percent decrease in apartments. It exceeds the standards of substantial change in the plan change policy and will require a new filing. I asked Eric Schlegel, director of DPD, about this. We had run into it at conservation. I hadn't run into it in zoning. And on four-twenty-three, two-fifteen, to me, copy Judy, Joe, Diane Tran, and our assistant city manager, Mike McGovern. The concept of a substantial change to an application is one found in zoning jurisprudence as to what would be required for a new public hearing as opposed to a minor change which a board may handle within the same hearing. This project does not meet the required criteria for a special permit. It is more detrimental to the neighborhood on four of the six criteria. The proposed change is substantial and therefore, new hearings must be established. And I, as an abutter, request the zoning board of appeals to deny this project. I would like to spend one more minute on one possible viable alternative. I'm not saying it's active, but I want you to see what could be built on this property. On June fifth, two thousand fifteen, we had a presentation by the executive director of the House of Hope. They were interested in the project. She's present up in the peanut gallery. The women who were going to leave there, live there, did not own cars, so there would be little traffic or parking impact. It was a known property manager. Everybody knows the House of Hope, right next to McDonald's, what they did to that house right across the bridge. And I understand from the executive director, there's a new property. And it contributes to the social good of the community. The presentation was made, a barrage of questions for over an hour, but as an abutter, that's a kind of project I could support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hamblit, I've got a question for you. So, just so I'm clear, on Woodbine Ave, what's available for parking based on what you just told us?
Based on?
What's available for parking on? What's available for parking on Woodbine Ave?
You know, it's my understanding that it is not a private, a, a paper street, but it is a private road, and therefore, any parking on a private road is up to the private owner, just like you can't park in front of my barn unless you ask me and get my approval. You can't park on my property.
So when the nursing home was there, you live, you're an abutter, when the nursing home was there, was there parking next to the building and also on the other side?
There was parking there. Wasn't legal?
So historically, there's always been parking there, to your knowledge?
Say, if there always been parking there.
Excuse me?
I can't speak, I can't speak to, if there's always been parking, I've only lived there for fifteen years. No.
So you're saying there's no parking, but you've lived there for fifteen years, you don't know if there's ever been parking?
No, no, no. They have, cars have parked there?
Yep.
I don't believe they've parked there legally.
Okay.
I, I believe it's privately owned. The testimony that was given before city council went unquestioned that it was privately-owned property. So therefore, I, I'm not a lawyer. You guys know that, right? I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming if it's private property, you can determine who can park on your property and who can't. As a zoning board, I don't know if you can give approval to park on somebody else's property. That seems a little far-fetched.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I understood what you were saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Louisa Varnum, 55 Varnum Terrace in Lowell. With me is my brother, Thomas Varnum. And I think I can shed some light on your recent question about Woodbine Ave. There's been much speculation concerning Woodbine Ave in the past year. My grandfather, Thomas Varnum, created Woodbine Ave. His purpose was to make a suitable entrance to the Woodbine Cemetery for the time when expansion of the cemetery would be necessary. This cemetery is presently out of space except for the 9,000 square feet to the rear, to which there is no access to but by Woodbine Ave. Recently, the abutter to the east attempted to gain use and possession of Woodbine Ave. The matter was discussed in the city council and referred to the city law department. The memo came back from the city solicitor, the city engineer, and the cemetery department that, in their opinion, the road was an important access to the rear portion of the Woodbine Cemetery and should remain for that purpose. Now the abutter to the west has presented plans to you that show the use of Woodbine Avenue to meet parking requirements for his project, relying on land that he does not own. In order to stop these aggressive attempts by abutters to use or take possession of Woodbine Avenue, my family has now registered the deed to Woodbine Avenue. We own it, and we intend to keep Woodbine Avenue for the use to which it was created by my grandfather. We do not intend to sell it. We do not intend to allow parking or any other use by abutters. This is a private property, a private street for use by the owners. And as an aside, to see why we want control of it, all of our relatives are buried in Woodbine Cemetery. It started as a family cemetery. It's still a private cemetery. It's not owned or cared for by the city. This is a, uh, we are the heirs of a man who had a vision. This man was my grandfather. He purchased land, he subdivided the property to fulfill that vision, and he put language in the deeds that would protect Woodbine Avenue from encroachment, and it would remain open forever, quote, that's in the deeds. Putting ten to twenty cars in Woodbine Avenue as a daily practice is against the deed language of open forever. Woodbine Avenue is not a paper street, but a private street, and it's described as such in all the abutting deeds. So any regulations pertaining to paper streets, as far as dividing it in half and having use or the east or the west side, none of that language pertaining to paper streets applies to Woodbine Avenue. Those who want to use Woodbine Avenue must obtain the permission of the property owners. The proponent of the project at 557 Varnum Avenue has no permission to use Woodbine Avenue. The zoning board should consider any part of this proposal that uses Woodbine Avenue to be invalid and deny that proposal. I have a copy of the deed here, if you're interested.
Sure. I'm sorry, Ms. Varnum. When you started, what, what was your address, please?
55 Varnum Terrace, but I'm also almost a direct abutter through my property at 526 Varnum Avenue opposite Woodbine Avenue.
Okay.
That's where Hawk Valley Farm has their official address.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question, ma'am.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. You just said you just recorded a deed with regards to Woodbine Avenue. When was that recorded?
It was recorded today.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dan Sgralia, and I do reside at 33 Ursula Street, which is what I will consider an abutting neighbor because of the proximity of the location. And just for a couple of points of clarification, I just wanna acknowledge the fact of how lucky we are in Pawtucketville to have people like Louisa Varnum and her family, and people like John Hamlet, to have such passion for the people that live there, for the quality of life, and what they bring to the neighborhood every single day. And as a city, we're very thankful because throughout the city, we have people like that. And I think that's the fabric of the city. Moving on to why I oppose it, and a couple of points of clarification, I think when we speak before this member of this board and/or to the public, when we give our address, we need to give our address to where we reside and not for the project. And I think earlier, the gentleman who is the principal in the project gave his address as the 557 or the number of the projects. So I'd like that be clarified for the record, what his residence address is, if he's speaking before the board. The second thing that comes to mind is precedence. I do not believe zoning boards can use precedence as a criteria. You can't say because there's an apartment building further down that, okay, we can use that because there's apartments in the neighborhood. Zoning does not work that way. Zoning is designed by a master plan, by the city's forefathers, by the councils, by committees, by people that believe this would be in the best interest of the future of Lowell, and the residents that reside there in particular neighborhoods. And I think it impacts the neighborhood when people come in and try to say that because I bought this at an auction, because I knew what the zoning was at the time, I did due diligence, and I was very thorough in knowing what the zoning was, to think that you can come into a neighborhood and say, but that's okay, I can go before boards and just change that because I wanna add more profit to the property. I think there's a lot of great developers that live in the city. I think there's a lot of great apartment owners that live and own properties in the city. And I think they all passed on this project because they knew it was zoned, single-family. And I think they realized that the neighborhood of Pawtucketville would like to remain that, and that's what the master plan, and that's what these people have focused on for many, many years. People that worked on the master plan for the city live in Pawtucketville, as they do in other parts of the city. So I think we have a good flavor for what we want as residents that live in the area. And I, I go back to the technical side, and I wonder, after a property has been closed and abandoned, I thought the zoning automatically reverted back to what it is zoned for, and that would be single-family residents. I think anything other than that, whether it's apartments or not, is just a, it, it's a fact-finding mission to see if I could maximize profits. And I just recently subdivided a lot that I live on for my family, and I went before boards like yourselves, and this board in particular. And it was important to me to build something that was gonna be accepted to my neighbors because I live there. I live in that neighborhood. This was not gonna be a house for sale. It wasn't gonna be an apartment that I rent. And I certainly would never offend the people that live there and put something in that they didn't want. And I kinda appreciate the fact that people that are sitting here tonight will make the effort to come out and be counted and be, and stand up for what they want in their neighborhood. I think the people that live in that neighborhood, on the side street of Rural Lane in that area, have dealt with parking issues and dealt with snow problems during the winter that were caused by the nursing home. And I think they worked in harmony with the nursing home, and everybody tried to get along. Nursing home was taking care of people that lived in our neighborhood as well, and the people who worked there lived in our neighborhood as well. So all those types of things are great, but you know what? Nursing home closed for whatever reason. It became a blighted structure. And it's been empty because other nursing homes can't make money there for whatever reason. So to take that property and now say to the neighbors, oh, we can just make it into whatever we want for more profit, is unfair. Those people have endured those issues for many, many years. And now they have an opportunity to get back to single-family residential neighbors. And I believe that is the best fit for that neighborhood. You know, we live in a place where, again, we have to live in harmony with each other. This plan does not call for that. The reason why I came here to make the effort to speak is because I wanna be like the Hamlets. I wanna be like the Louisa Varnums, because you do have to come forward. And I think in the situation that someone came to my home at 6:30 at night, did not identify himself as the owner, and made the remarks of, if we do not get this approved, and we have lawyers working on this, look what you could put in there, and mentioned three, four, or five different items that he thought would be intimidating to me and my family if they were in that building. Do not come to my city, do not come to my neighborhood and try to intimidate me with those types of statements, because we'll bring down four or 500 people that will speak against the project. As he spoke and said that he went out to the neighborhoods, I'm not sure how many of those people here tonight that he spoke to, maybe three or four, but as you can look around the room, you're gonna have 60 or 70 people that wanna speak. And you know what? We live in that neighborhood. To me, we have first right to refusal of what's gonna be in that neighborhood in reason. And you know, I did sit in that meeting when the House of Hope came and made a presentation. It was done wonderfully, and they addressed the needs. And they came back to residents and said, how can we even make it better? What do you want? And they addressed things like cars coming in, our trucks not making deliveries, or us not making it into a central commissary for all our other buildings. They said all the right things. But you know why? Because they live in our city. They're part of our city. And I think that's what's important, and that's why I'm thankful that we have board members like yourselves, planning board, conservation board, they put the city first, they put the residents of the neighborhood second, and then they put the petitioners third. And if those things can't be met to deliver the type of neighborhood that is existing, then there's something wrong with our systems, and I hope that doesn't happen tonight. Please vote not to let this go through. Please let the process work. Please let the laws in place be effective. Please let the master plan continue, and please let the people who live there that have to deal with this every day for the next X amount of years have the right to say what should go there. And thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Deb Porgione, Pawtucketville Citizen Council. Okay, so I'm here because we did have a couple of meetings with the Pawtucketville Citizen Council. We did talk to over thirty people in the area. We talked to the people that were actually got notices from the applicant. And I think what I would like to do, 'cause everyone's been sitting here so patiently, if we could just have a raise of hands of people who are against the project as presented, and if we could get that number in the minutes, Judy, is that possible? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28.
29, Jason, who's captain.
Oh, 29. And I also have three residents that had to leave. Um, let's see, we have 21 Jennifer Road had to leave, 560 Varnum Ave had to leave, and three Jennifer Road. So what we have here really are abutters. So what the Pawtucketville Citizen Council did is, we're here for the abutters, and those are the ones that take the brunt of most of the building, the nursing home that had been there, what the proposal is. So if I could just bore you a little bit more about some facts here and some details that, if we could get this into the minutes, okay? This is not an abandoned piece of property. It's actually a neglected piece of property, and it wasn't mowed or taken care of all through the summer when Mr. Said Coats went out of the country for vacation. So it's not that it's blighted, it's owned, it's just not taken care of. So recently, he did do the, the leave blowing, so that, that was helpful for the neighbors. Since everybody else had already done their leaves, he did his leaves too. Okay, the building was bought for $350,000 in a fair bidding process at an auction. Another fact is, the property is 51,821 square feet, equal to five lots in a single suburban family-zoned area. That would be equal five homes. Everyone here probably would agree with me that that nursing home on that lot was too aggressive, even when it was allowed at the time that it was. It takes up three-quarters of the lots. Zoning now that we have in the city of Lowell would never allow for this. So it was overbuilt to begin with. It's there now. It was overbuilt. It should have never been there in a single-family residential neighborhood. But it is. We feel that the only thing that's equitable is that if, if that's equal to five homes, then it's, if you're gonna make any kind of compromise, five lots, I mean, five units. If there were gonna be five homes, then have five units. Restore that neighborhood to where it was before. And a couple, and some of the information Mr. Said Coats gave to us that helped us in our meetings find out, like, what it was definitively, how could we express ourselves? Like, what was the biggest issue? And the biggest issue was always, that building was always overbuilt, and never enough parking. There's only 16 parking spaces. Right now, the parking spaces has been clarified, he only has 16 parking spaces. The other issue on his plan is that he shows a dumpster that's eight feet by 10 feet that's very close to the abutters. That, that's something that, that needs to be moved away from the single-family homes in the back. He doesn't show adequate snow storage. And if you look at the plan, there's a, like, there's a section, the dumpster's eight by 10, and the snow storage, proposed snow storage is about the same size. Well, that's just crazy. You, you can't have an eight by 10 area for snow storage. So the trash receptacle has to be moved away from the single-family homes. The snow storage is woefully inadequate. All right. So now, the other thing that we were saying, okay, what are the, some of the other issues? Well, if there were five homes, based on the, the, the figures that we got for Mr. Said Coats, I'm just gonna get my water. I'm just going to get my water. I've been here a long time, right from work. I don't know if anyone else has had dinner, but I haven't. Okay, so the figures work like this. If there were five homes, the figures that we got for Mr. Said Coats is, there would be five homes, there would be seven trips a day for each home, so it's 35 trips a day, 245 a week, 980 a month, and 11,000 for the year approximately. This project proposed by Mr. Said Coats works out this way. 18 units, 120 a day, seven days a week, 840 trips per week on Varnum Avenue. In the course of a month, 3,360 trips in a month. And in the whole year, 40,320 trips down Varnum Avenue. And to get, half of them will probably want to go over the Rock Bridge. So by his figures that he gave us, that project, as he asked you to approve, is 40,000 trips per year. So the reason I wanted to bring up all these issues is because on a special permit, there's some criteria that you have to meet, which is parking. Let's see here. Okay, so those are the issues that are not better than what the nursing home was there. So he doesn't meet the criteria for number two, for the traffic flow safety, including parking and loading. And also, let's see here, and also the impact on the natural environment. Well, if you're going to put 40,000 trips on Varnum Avenue for one project, I would say that that's not really going to be good for the environment, just the emissions of the cars alone. And also, the potential fiscal impact, okay, on city services, tax base, and employment. Well, if you're putting another 40,000 cars on Varnum Avenue, I'm going to say that you're going to have to probably ask for, what was it, Chapter 290 to redo those roads very soon? And this kind of project does put more services to the police and the fire department in inspectional services. So with that said, that is like, that's what I wanted to bring to you from the neighbors that, we've been talking about this since July, July, August, September, October, November. And it is a little dismaying that now I hear there's another plan that was presented, but this is the meetings that we've talked about, and we're asking you to deny the project as presented, and if there is a compromise, make it a compromise that fits the neighborhood that doesn't produce 40,000 trips a day on Varnum Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Angelie Logg. I live on.
You have to come to the microphone, please.
I'm Angelie Logg. I live on 21 Cedar Lane, which is, I think, page four if you look at the plan.
Yep, you want the abutters in back, yep.
Yeah, so.
My name's Barbara Higgin, and I'm on the abut, and I live right behind the nursing home.
Okay, thank you. What number, ma'am, are you at? I'm sorry. 11, I'm sorry.
My name's Nancy Mainville, and I live at 11 Cedar Lane, and I am in a abut.
My name is Debbie Maycumber. I'm at 6 Cedar Lane. I'm also on a abut.
My name is Janice Underwood. I live at 6 Cedar Lane. I am in a abut. We are some of the abutters. We feel that this project that Said wants to construct is much too large for the neighborhood. We want to see this drastically scaled down. The placement of the dumpster will still have a high impact on the abutters because of the atrocious smells, especially in the warmer weather. The placement of the dumpster is too close to the property line. We, as abutters, are requesting a sturdy six-foot fence to be installed the length of the property. In the past, there was a stockade fence that constantly fell because of the weight of the snow being pushed against it. And by the way, he has it as a stockade fence and not as a vinyl fence. Where is there enough snow, where is enough space for snow storage, parking, and dumpsters? Now, I have a little show and tell here.
Do you want to pass it around?
No, I'm going to go up there. I need to walk. Can I, may I go ahead? You stay out of my water zone. Have we forgotten what it was like last winter? The proposal of 13 two-bedrooms, five-single-bedroom apartments, where two-bedroom apartments, we feel, there would be children and a lack of green space for them to play. The children residing in these apartments would wander into our yard, and this would cause a liability for us. We also feel that Said should construct sidewalks on Varnum Ave. and Meadowview Drive for safety reasons. Because of the ledge in the back, is it even possible to expand the parking as Said has mentioned in the past? And you can see the ledge? Because he has mentioned. He mentions a lot of things different times. The homes on the right side of Cedar Lane only have one-quarter of a basement. The rest is ledge. Cedar Lane abuts the back of the proposed apartments. Will there be enough off-street parking for the tenants and also their visitors? With 16 parking space available in the back, and at least 36 will be needed for proposed apartments, there will be on-street parking as we had with the nursing home. Do we need to put this, do we need to put up with the additional traffic in pocket in front of our homes once again? In the winter, when they have snow, what happens at that point? Does his residence park on Meadowview Drive and Cedar Lane so he can get plowed out, and the city comes by and can't get through, and therefore, we're stuck? It is extremely dangerous to enter Varnum Ave. from Meadowview Drive because of the heavy traffic and speed. With the addition 36-plus vehicles, this will have a negative impact crossing the already congested Rock Bridge. We are also concerned about construction of the apartments because Said's intention is to hire a third party to maintain the property. He has also stated the maintenance will not be living on the property. This is called an absent landlord. Absentee landlords are never a good thing. Again, this development is too large for the area. We also don't believe our property will hold its value with this type of construction. At the end of the day, we, as a neighborhood, will again have to live with all the past problems and possibly more. Said will go home to another town and leave us with this mess. We want to see this drastically scaled down to restore it back to suburban, single-family homes. Thank you for your time and attention. I also have a few letters that some of the abutters couldn't make. This abut is 28 Meadowview Drive, and their name is Richard and Christine McCarthy. We oppose the special permit requested for the 20-unit apartment. We would like to see that property returned to its original intent, single-family residence. I have another one. Francisco. He's another abut. He's almost, these people are just almost across the street from them. I, Francisco, live at 20 Meadowview Drive. I oppose the 18-to-20 apartment dwelling. I would like it to go back to single-family homes. I have another one. We live across the street on Jennifer Road from 557 Varnum Ave. We reject the current proposal to this property. A concerned taxpayer.
What address on Jennifer? What's her last name?
He didn't, he didn't.
I have it, yes.
You don't?
That is, June Peterson, 21.
Yep, 21 Jennifer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and this one is a little lengthy. This is from Tom and Dawn Cunningham, and they live at 591 Varnum Ave. I am unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, I do want to voice my opposition of the proposal 18-to-20 units apartment dwelling. I have lived on Varnum Ave. for 30 years. In that time, I have seen the traffic increase 10-folds with the additional homes off Topman Road, West Meadow Road, and Varnum Ave. It is increasingly difficult to exit my driveway. Between the additional vehicles, fire trucks, ambulance, and multiple motorcycles on events along the river, some day, some night, it is almost impossible. The increased traffic and cars this complex would represent would take it over the top. The Rock Bridge is already strained to capacity with the flow of cars going to Drakehead and Pelham from surrounding towns. To increase that flow would be fu-hardly and dangerous. The permanently temporary bridge cannot sustain more load. It is enough that we must endure road races, bike races, regardless, and other events without adding more housing to our already bulging roadway. With the unit, what the unit is zoned for is perfectly acceptable to the surrounding neighborhood. Please do not add any more housing to the increase, to increase your profit. Pawtucketville is one of the nicest sections of Lowell. Please don't ruin it. And that's Tom and Dawn Cunningham. That's all I have. These?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. You know, everybody here is very dedicated because they're not at home watching that famous football team. My name is Anne Marie Page. I live at 26 Fremont Street in Lowell, and I am the vice president of the Lowell Citywide Neighborhood Council. I believe the key words in this whole evening is, "Change from non-conforming use to another less detrimental, non-conforming use." I've heard an awful lot of detrimental going on. So, since this is a public hearing and there are new plans, but the public hasn't seen the new plans, I have a few questions. Exactly on the original application, how many apartments were there? Was it 20 or 18?
18.
It was 18 on the original application.
I'm just recording what you're saying. I'm not answering the question right now.
So we don't know what was on the original application?
I will take a look at it. I will record it. You're asking a question, I will record it, then I'll put the public know.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. So we, right now, where we are here, we don't know if we're talking 20, 18, 16, 13, or half a dozen. I don't know where the numbers come from, who picks them, or what. But the last time I remember sitting here, it was 18. Okay? Also, there's a two-year timeframe. Glenwood closed and was shut down on a certain date, and then I believe you have two years to stay in their little non-conforming issue. So I would like somebody to double-check on the dates. And I did see the very pretty picture that was in the newspaper today on page three, and it was a pretty picture. But pictures don't drive cars. Pictures don't generate more water. They don't generate more sewage. They don't have more calls to the police department. They don't have more calls to the fire department or the emergency service. This is going to generate an awful lot of strain on traffic, on the city, on that neighborhood. And if I remember right, the icing on the cake to this whole project is that at the pre-application discussion hearing, Mr. Coats made it perfectly clear that he was going to become another one of our famous absentee landlords. And you all know, in Lowell, that is one of our favorite things. Now, did the city of Lowell do the trip generation figures, or was a contractor that did the figures? That was my other question. I think you have a lot on the plate. I think the message is out there. This is a very good neighborhood. It's not much trouble. It's getting along fine. It's good for the city. 18 apartments, 16 apartments. Even 12 apartments would not be a gift. We would like you to give us some serious, serious thought, and we'll wait for your answers. Thank you kindly.
Okay, before anybody gets up, ma'am, just hold off a minute. So Judy, since this board's being asked, you know, direct questions about process and procedures, the original application, I know the applicant made a comment, so what was the original number of units?
It was 18 on the application.
18, 18 units, right. Okay. And then I heard a question about a two-year period. I'm not sure what that was about, but did you hear the question about the two-year period, non-conforming use?
A two-year time limit does not come into play in this situation. The criteria, the special permit is for a new use as compared to a prior use.
Yep.
It doesn't take into account how long that prior use, or how long the building has been vacant. There is a two-year time limit on permits, on special permits that have to be enacted in two years. There's a one-year time limit for reconstructing a structure after catastrophe, but there's no time limit related to this particular special permit.
Oh, and as far as the trip generation figures, there was an independent study conducted by the petitioner, which was then reviewed by the city Lowell Traffic Engineer. So there were two studies. Could I enter a correction to the record? No. What I would like, no. What I would like to do is handle it.
It does say 20 units.
Just to handle it.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah, I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
How are you?
My name is Jane Calvin. I'm the Executive Director of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. We own the property at five, we own the conservation restriction at 526 Varnum Ave, which is also known as Hawk Valley Farm.
Could you just give us your home address, please?
My own, I live in Westford, 64 Broadway Street in Westford.
That's fine. Thank you.
Sure. The trust has worked for several years to protect this property. In fact, I still remember the day in 2000 when a fax came through, back in the days of faxes, and it came directly from the Department of Planning and Development that spoke of the conservation value of this corridor. And then between 2000 and 2009, we worked diligently with the neighborhood to to have this corridor, the vision for the corridor, and support the city's goals, environmental goals of creating corridors and adding integrity to the environment in Pawtucketville. Connecting the state forest with the state park on the Merrimack River, reducing flood impacts and such. So Hawk Valley Farm is an incredible property that dates back to 1664. And we hold the conservation restriction with the trustees of Reservations, which is a state, large statewide organization. And Louise Varnum is the owner of the, of the property itself. This is the only conservation restriction of its kind in the city. So this corridor documented back in this, with this fax from 2000, subsequently went through three different planning processes, all voted on by several boards and the city council. And all of them spoke of the value of this particular corridor. So my comments tonight really pertain to the plan proposed as it uses Woodbine Ave. And I also was active in following the last two requests for abandonment. So I just want to, I'd like to pass out some brochures about the property. I also want you to be aware that we're working very closely with UMass Lowell and both the Pawtucket and the Wang Schools and the Bartlett School to actively use this property as a site for field trips, which is pretty unusual. And Woodbine Ave would be, it is, an important opportunity for students to be able to get, to see the cemetery and to access Hawk Valley Farm without having to use the sidewalks. So I'll pass out the brochure. And I just, I think it's important to keep in mind that the loss of this corridor would actually, it seems pretty minor, you know, what seems to be a paper street would actually prevent, would actually cause a pretty significant blow to three planning documents that have been voted on by the city council.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Laurie Stanton. My address is 538 Varnum Ave. I live across the street from the nursing home. I'll try to be brief. I think there's a couple of issues, which most people have spoken about, the parking issue and the residential zone, the single-family zoning. I moved there in 1997. Been there a long time. And when it was a nursing home, I heard somebody say that at night, it's very quiet there. There's not much, nobody's parked across the street. It's very quiet. It was nice. It was busy during the day, but after six or seven, not at all. This gentleman came to my house at like 6:30 at night on a Sunday night and really did try to scare me. Do you want this to be a homeless shelter across the street? Do you want this to be a place for the mentally ill? Or would you like residential housing there? So and he talked about how this was going to be high-end and there was a need for this in Lowell. But I've seen that apartment building, the grand view, and how it sat there. First, the developer lost it, and then somebody else took it over. It was high-end condos and high-end rental. The other building was rental. And it sat there for, I think, close to 10 years before it finally became mostly, I don't think it's still fully occupied. I don't know, though. So I just I don't think there's enough units, enough parking for all the units he has, he has planned. And I'd like to see single-family homes there. I moved there because it's a zoned, single-family. There isn't much single-family zoning, I don't think, in Lowell. Maybe Belvedere and Pawtucketville. There's plenty of rental units all over the town. So that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Hearing, that portion of public hearing is closed. Just real quick, Mr. Gary, we were handed a package of people that signed. And I, I know there was a representative that handed off some signed documents in opposition. But we received this packet of people that live in the area that are voting, or excuse me, are supporting the petition. Does either yourself or Mr. Said have any idea how many are in here?
I don't. He, he may.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman. So there are 88 responses there.
Okay.
And so you know, the fact that folks may have been intimidated by my presence, I'm disappointed in that. I don't, I don't know what it might be about me that was intimidating, but I'm very disappointed to hear that. You know, what I can tell you is that of those 88 responses that are in your hand there, those have been signed, some by butlers. So my neighbor, Janice, she mentioned Francisco, who lives across the street.
Excuse me? Can't, can't speak out?
She mentioned Francisco. I had quite a lengthy conversation with Francisco. And he voted for upscale apartments. She also mentioned Richard McCarthy, who is next door, also in a butler. He's next door to Francisco. He voted in favor of upscale apartments. So I'm not sure what changed as a result of, you know, whatever conversations he may have had with anyone else. I do know that some neighbors did express concerns of being intimidated by their neighbors. And so they were very reluctant to come out tonight and show support. But those 88 votes in your hand, over 70% of them are in favor of the upscale housing. Okay? There were some that were in favor of some other options that I was looking at as a business person normally would do, look at other options when they're making business decisions. And so there were people that were in favor of that, those, some of those other options. And so that percentage is approximately 100 minus 70, almost 30%. So the fact that there are 29 folks out here tonight, that's actually representative of what I've noticed as I've gone around the neighborhood. That's about the rate of different ideas that I've seen come up as I've gone to people's houses. They've welcomed me into their homes. I've sat in many people's kitchens, my neighbors, that were not intimidated to let me into their home. Okay? I had lengthy conversations with some of my butlers in the rear, Nancy, Barbara. They expressed their concerns. And I accept that because I asked them, I said, I don't really want to sway your decision one way or the other. I want to hear what are your objections and how we can make this a better project. Okay? For the folks that are just vehemently opposed to the project on different bases that are not founded in fact, that, that's their opinion. The facts are the facts, and everyone is allowed to their opinion. And I don't fault them for that opinion. But if I may, I just want to offer some facts on some of the things that were mentioned tonight. May I quickly?
I wanted to find out how many were here. And then the next thing I was going to do was bring it back to Mr. Gary or yourself. If you want to, either one of you can speak if you have any comments for many of the, I guess, people in opposition.
What I would like to do, because a lot of the comments were addressed directly towards Mr. Coats, I'd like him to handle a rebuttal. But, Mr. Chairman, if I could, in the meantime, take a look at the deed that was allegedly recorded today. I have not seen that.
Sure.
Certainly nothing was on record as of yesterday.
Oh, okay. I was going to say. I think I lost it that quick. Okay, so Mr. Coats, floor is yours.
Okay. I just have a few handouts here for the board. So there's one single sheet of paper that you'll have in front of you. That's actually Article 5, Section 5.1 from the Lowell City Zoning Ordinances. So again, everyone is entitled to their opinion of the potential problems that this project may or may not cause, this potential burden, the strain that it may or may not cause on the city. The first thing to note is that the maximum FAR for SSF, the maximum floor-to-area ratio for the suburban, single-family zone district, is .35. If you do the math, this parcel has 1.2 acres. Okay? If you convert that to square feet. Okay? And have that in your denominator and the numerator is the number of square feet for the project, which is 18,860 square feet. That equals an FAR of .35. So when you look at the facts, okay, versus opinion, the density argument is completely unfounded based on the fact that we are not exceeding the maximum FAR of the suburban, single-family district. That's a fact.
Okay.
On the next handout, you'll notice it's a thicker packet titled Pawtucketville Greenway and Wildlife Corridor Plan. You'll notice that the word, this one here, I have more copies if you need one, Chairman Bailey.
Yeah, I didn't, I get. That's okay. Thank you.
If you look at that, at the top of it, the word "plan" is highlighted for a particular reason. Mr. Hamlet, one of my butlers, he referenced this plan. You had someone from Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust reference wildlife corridors and greenways. You've heard that a couple of times. Before we even get to this first page here, Mr. Hamlet referenced the Open Space Plan, the Lowell City Plan. I have excerpts from those plans in this packet here. They're talking about nothing that has to do with Woodbine Avenue. They're talking about nothing that has to do with this project, nothing related to this parcel. There's the Concord River Greenway. There are conservation efforts throughout the city, as there are in every city. But that is completely orthogonal to this plan. It has absolutely nothing to do with this plan. If you were to ask DPD if there's any conservation protections on this plan or on this, on this parcel, the answer you will hear is no, there is not. There is no recognized wildlife corridor or greenway that is on this property or runs through Woodbine Avenue. It's a plan. And now we'll go back to the first page, and that's particularly why I highlighted the word "plan", because it's a plan. It's been a vision of some folks for over 10 years. And I'm not here to knock that plan. I'm not here to knock that vision. But to state that this project would in some way hinder a wildlife corridor that never was, that's a far overreaching statement, and it's a misrepresentation of reality. The wildlife corridor on Greenway does not exist. It's a plan. It's a vision. I'm here to talk about my plan, my vision. The last item that you have in front of you is a letter from Assistant City Solicitor Ken Rossetti. And I'll just read some excerpts from that letter. I think it's probably not necessary to mention Mr. Rossetti's credentials. I'm sure you're familiar, all familiar with who he is and his role in working for the city. So he is a legal expert. There was someone before you here tonight that admitted that they're not an attorney. Neither am I. Mr. Rossetti is. He has a J.D. In paragraph number three, the Lowell City Assistant City Solicitor, Ken Rossetti, stated, "Woodbine Avenue is a paper street, not a public way." This letter is dated September 2014. On page two, second paragraph, Mr. Rossetti goes further and says, "Further, the most recent deed for 557 Varnum Avenue, dated 1993, expressly refers to the Bituminous Parking Area located within Woodbine Avenue. Private Drive, entitled to and rights of the public and others entitled thereto and and to those portions of the insured premises lying within the bounds of Woodbine Ave." Private Drive in parentheses. Mr. Rossetti has clearly stated in his legal opinion, in no uncertain terms, what his findings have been on Woodbine Avenue. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, the nursing home has used this parking lot since approximately 1971. We're talking about over 40 years. This has been in use as a parking lot. And so the fact that there is opposition to the project before you, it does not surprise me that there has appeared from the ether different claims about Woodbine Avenue. I'm just going by what the gentleman with the J.D. has stated for our favor. Okay? I just want to address a couple of other items. I just want to address a couple of other items. In terms of Mr. Hamlet mentioning he did not, did not see the revised plans, Mr. Rossetti's input was very recent, as DPD will confirm. So, we tried to react as quickly as we can. Again, I have had community meetings. Folks came before you with plans in their hand that they received from the gentleman in front of you, okay? I've done extensive outreach with the community. And the community has spoken. Again, those votes in front of you are signed by neighbors and over seventy percent are in favor of this project. That is a fact. The reference to not meeting parking requirements, I think we've beat that one to death. That's either a yes or no answer and I think the plans in front of you have demonstrated that, yes, we do meet the parking requirements and there is no intent to have on-street parking. In terms of the property having an adverse fiscal impact, again, Mr. Hamlet made this unfounded claim. The irony is that if there were, as he suggested, an alternative option, which is up on the screen, I have House of Hope there, the property comes off the tax rolls, okay? That is a founded, real, negative financial impact. That's a fact. Mr. Hamlet also has visions of the nursing home coming back. I think even some of the folks that came in front of you after Mr. Hamlet realized that that's not a reality and so, I don't think we need to really talk about that one. We're really here to talk about a project that has been brought before you with some great plans that under four-dot-five-dot-two is less detrimental than a previous use. And so, that's the question that we're answering tonight. There was, there was mentioned, this was actually, I felt, a good comment worthy of, you know, more thought, the fact of how will people, how will we be able to plow if people are parked in their parking spaces? And so, there's a simple answer to that. The parking lot is large enough for people to temporarily move and once the area is plowed, to move back without necessarily having, having to go onto the street. You can plow a parking lot in segments. I think that may be common knowledge to most of the board, but I just want to make sure it's addressed explicitly.
So, would that mean on your current plan where you have, in the rear, you have nine, nine spots, right?
Sixteen, seventeen with the-
Trying to get the sixteen, right? So, those are basically up against the, I'll say against the fence or wherever you're going to have on the rear of the property, then you have the one handicap. So, I think you still have room to move them back if you're going to have the snowstorm or you can move them towards the building, I'll just say it that way.
Absolutely.
How they get located, stacked, just to have a clear way to clean that out, move the cars back in. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you're stating.
That is absolutely correct.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
There were three concerns. One of my butters shared with me, we had a forty-five-minute conversation in their kitchen and again, I'm thankful that they were comfortable enough to let me into their home and feel comfortable speaking to me. And so, those three things that they mentioned were the smell from the dumpster, which I believe you heard tonight. So, we certainly can look and I, I promised them that we would look into maybe trying to find another location for the dumpster if for no re, no other reason, because of the smell, if that is indeed a problem. One thing to note is that when the dumpster was there as a nursing home, it was a one-hundred-and-one-bed facility, so the dumpster pickup was daily at five AM. So, it was coming in, making a lot of noise, disturbing them, waking them up, just not a good situation, you know, not a good neighborly situation. So, with the proposed use of no more than eighteen units, there is no daily pickup of the garbage. Also, we're proposing to put a fence around the dumpsters. There was no fence around the dumpsters before, so that's part of the reason why they had trash in their, in their yard previously. But in addition to having a fence around the dumpsters, we're also going to have a stockade fence running along the property line. There was one before, but from what I'm told, it may not have been properly installed where there may have been about a six-to-twelve-inch gap at the bottom and that's why they had trash in their yard. So, you know, again, the spirit of my interactions with every single one of my neighbors is feedback and how do we make this better? And I got that from some of them and again, that has been incorporated into the plans that are in front of you. The idea of reverting a property to single-family, what's interesting is that you, people have used the term "original intent." Well, when you actually do the research, you find out that when the nursing home was built in the early nineteen-sixties, I believe it was sixty-two, the SSF zoning designation did not exist at that point. So, there is no reverting back to because it was intended to be a nursing home when it was built and there was no suburban, single-family constraint. So, I can appreciate if some folks are a little shell-shocked from the nursing home experience and its heavy burdensome use on the community, the parking demand that it created, but that was not under my tenure. I cannot own that problem. All I can do at this point is try to alleviate it and make it better. And I believe that, again, is what these proposals in front of you and these plans in front of you attempt to do. This fence, just to be clear, the fence is a six-foot fence that I've proposed in the plans. It is a six-foot fence. It is a stockade fence and yes, it is also vinyl and yes, it is proposed to be white. The fear of additional traffic on a Rook Bridge, I can understand that fear. I've sat on a Rook Bridge many a times. But again, that's not applicable, that's well outside the scope of this project, okay? I'm targeting folks that work on the same side of the bridge. I'm targeting Lowell General, which is right down the street. You don't need to cross the Rook Bridge to go down Varnum Avenue. You don't need to cross the Rook Bridge to go work at, as a faculty or staff member UMass Lowell. So, again, I understand the fear and just the trauma from having to sit on a Rook Bridge, but none of that is founded here in the plans in front of you and none of it emanates from these plans. I think you kind of heard some, what I'm going to call impromptu traffic estimates that Deb Ford Young presented up here. I think we have a gentleman in a room who works for the city, who is extremely qualified to give real traffic estimates. I think you received those traffic estimates. I think you've received traffic estimates that I had commissioned from someone who also is qualified. I suggest and ask that the board stick to the facts. The idea that I would look to spend over a million dollars on a project and then be absent in the management of that over one-million-dollar investment, I think that that defies all logic. There is no logic on God's green earth that would conform to that idea. And actually, Mr. Chairman, just to make yourself and the board aware of something, I do have a facilities manager. I don't mow the lawn, okay? If I'm not present, business is still being taken care of. I have a facilities manager that is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week and he lives in Pawtucketville. So, when we talk about economic impact for, for the city, there is a real economic benefit of me revitalizing this property. It will help small businesses once this project is, once this parcel is back in service and once this project is complete. I'm not crawling under the building to fix plumbing. I hire service people who are from Lowell, like Le Blank Contractors, who I have hired to do work at the building. And that was actually a pretty big check that we cut to them. So, this does help small businesses. So, any idea that, again, an over one-million-dollar investment somehow hurts the community, it defies all logic. That statement is not grounded in anything factual or anything logical. But what I can tell you is that if deep, if you ask DPD, when was that permit pulled for that work with Le Blank Contractor, contracting, they'll tell you it was in two thousand and fourteen. So, we're spending real money in Lowell and so with your approval of this project, we'd like to continue to do that. There are so many more things that I can go on and offer rebuttals to, but I think you get the point. The facts are the facts and opinions are opinions and everyone is entitled to their opinion. And I have a lot of respect for the folks that came out today, every single one of you. Louis Savarnum, her and her family have been longstanding members of this community. Her brother, Thomas, is seventh, okay? I studied your family history and I think it's quite impressive, some of the stories that I've read in the past, going all the way back to the seventeen-hundreds. I have nothing but absolute respect for all of these folks that have come out and given their input tonight. So, to that, I say thank you. And thank you to the board and to you also, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. The, one question. The meeting you conducted on November tenth, approximately, how many attendees were there?
It was a very low turnout. There were less than twenty.
Okay.
There were folks that did, again, express to me concerns of intimidation by their neighbors.
Yep. Okay. I don't, I can't get involved with that.
Absolutely.
So, there were approximately twenty attendees, yep? You know, I, I asked everyone not to make comments. I, I don't know what else you want me to do.
And again, for the record-
I asked a gentleman, he said there were twenty there. Leave it at that, okay?
For, for the record, I invited approximately two-hundred-and-fifty of my closest neighbors.
Okay.
And many of them thought it wasn't necessary. We had already had lengthy conversations. Again, they welcomed me into their homes, many of them that were not intimidated.
Chairman Geary, do you have any thing else you'd like to-